How's it testing? One, two, three back there? I'm good? Okay. Donna, you ready? Ready? Good evening. Welcome to the June 14th, 2023 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors. I'm Chair Scott Lambert. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our attendees here at the table. Starting on my far left is Township Manager Steve Brown and Solicitor Bernadette Kearney. Are you getting feedback on me? Okay. And on my media right is Vice Chair Rich Orlow and Supervisor Peter Fixler. I'd like to mention a few meeting decorum points. The meeting is being recorded, and residents will have the opportunity to comment on each agenda item after the staff and the supervisors discuss. Please come to the podium and provide your name and address. And if you're commenting via Zoom, Donna Weigert will assist you there. Non-agenda items can be brought up during the public comments section. Tonight, Rich, Peter, and I are pleased to welcome our State Senator Kathy Muth and Nikki Whitlock to listen in on the Chester County Planning Commission Agenda Item, the Starter Home Pilot Project Initiative. And we are also happy to have Representative of the Chester County Planning Commission, Libby Horowitz, and William D. Guffroy as well. I'll begin with the board briefing. We had an executive session tonight, June 14th, 2023, for legal personnel and real estate issues. I guess we'll start off with some grant application updates. Catherine?
So since the last board meeting, I'm pleased to announce a few updates. And I think we have a spreadsheet we can share here. Those are the, I know it's a little small, but the highlighted ones are the new ones to announce since the last meeting. The township did receive a grant in the amount of $20,000 from Williams Pipeline Corporation. This is for Baktin Hill Park Improvements. We'll use this as matching funds for, we have several grants right now for that initiative. And we have a new pending application to the DCD GTRP program for additional Baktin Hill Park improvements in the amount of $250,000. That one's pending, so you see it in the yellow up there. That brings our total in our pending award and awarded categories to just over $33 million.
Thank you. Moving on, John Nagel, if you can give us an update on the existing sewer sale?
Okay. Sorry about that. Just very briefly, the Office of Consumer Advocate in Pennsylvania filed a petition for review appealing the Public Utility Commission's opinion and order with Commonwealth Court. On Monday, June 5th, about a week ago, the parties to the appeal, the Office of Consumer Affairs, the Public Utility Commission, Aqua, and the Township argued for a panel of three judges. As I mentioned, I'll keep this brief. The primary inquiry for the Commonwealth Court is whether the commission's finding of the transaction will promote affirmative public benefits and is supported by the evidence in the record. We are cautiously optimistic that we will be able to highlight the areas in the record that supports the commission's decision while we cannot guarantee a result. In terms of the timing of an order by the Commonwealth Court, we likely will not receive a final determination until after the summer and expect it to come in September at the earliest. That concludes the summary.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, we have a question online. Hold on. Go ahead, Carol.
Yes, hi. This is Carol Rapp, 89 Village Way. I have some questions about the sewer sale. How much money is the township looking to get for that sale?
The township settled on the sale from Aqua, or to Aqua, was around $54 million. That money is with the township and being held under the appeal.
Okay, because I did see from a note back in November, in the minutes from November of 2021, that the township was looking to put those funds towards a public works debt of over $5 million and to put proceeds to fund the new police station, renovate existing administration office, acquire open space, upgrade parks and trails, and stormwater management. My question is, acquire open space. We should consider those funds for perhaps Bishop Tube. I just want to put that out there. There's, you know, that's an ongoing thing, I know. But that part, this part of the township still doesn't have any kind of park. And that is, could be purchased as open space. So $54 million is a lot of money.
Let me just clarify a little bit. The money is in the township's bank account earning interest because we have to pay the debt on the public works building as well as the sewer loans. But we've made a, I think, what is a prudent business decision not to spend any of that money or consider spending any of that money until after the appeal has been resolved.
Which you're hoping will be the end of the summer? Is that what I heard earlier?
Will be as early as September, hopefully soon after. We can't control the calendar of the Commonwealth Court. They set their own calendar. But the estimates, time estimates that we've been told are pretty consistent with what has actually happened so far. So we're hoping to hear sometime in September.
But I did want to interject just one item, Bernadette Kearney, the solicitor, is there is also a right to appeal, to request the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania to take the appeal. And they also are under no time constraint when a petition for allowance of appeal is filed to make a decision. So even though the Commonwealth Court may make a decision in September, it could still, either whoever loses could take it up to the Supreme Court. But you have to petition the Supreme Court and ask them, will you take this case? And the Supreme Court has, as long as it wants to decide whether it wants to take the case.
And I understand, I do understand that process. I just, I just wanted to go on record for saying it indicated that it would be, could be used to acquire open space. And we have property here in the southern township, part of the township, that would be a good candidate for that.
I just want to go on record for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Don't go anywhere. There's another question. Go ahead, Deb.
Deb Mobio, 42 Village Way. I just want to second what Carol said, and I appreciate her bringing it up in public. This is something, and I realize you can't make a commitment on it now. But in planning for the future, this has been a consistent problem with the southern part of the township. I know you continue to pursue open land in the northern section. But you already have a lot of open land up there. And I say, go for it. Buy it all. We have way too much development here. But again, I just would like to second that. And whatever can be done to start to plan for that in the future, I'm sure that we can find you plenty of volunteers to help work on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Moving on, under 2D, the Route 30 Quarter Update. The board and the staff has been providing regular information and updates regarding the plan for improvements for Route 30 Quarter at our public meetings for over a year now. We're in the home stretch as we're expecting an announcement on our pending $23 million federal grant application to help fund this project. As soon as this Friday, but with an outside date that is supposed to be no later than June 28th. To date, we've received $3.5 million of state-funded grant money to help with this project. We continue to appreciate the support that we've had from our legislative and state agency that exist out there. And that would include U.S. Senator Bob Casey, U.S. Senator John Fetterman, Senator Katie Muth, who has just made an appearance, Carol Cametta, John Kane, Representative Christine Howard, and a special shout-out for some things that have gone on this week at the last minute trying to make some important phone calls from U.S. Representative Chrissy Houlihan and our Chester County Commissioner Josh Maxwell. So we thought it would be a good idea to take a step back and remind the community of why we're doing this. As many of our residents are likely aware, the township has been actively seeking solutions to address the number of the issues that exist along the quarter. These issues include high levels of traffic creating, heavy congestion, air pollution, a significant number of documented rear-end collisions, lack of medians, and limited turning lanes, and an inconsistent network of sidewalks, no bike lanes, and in general, just looking at planned improvements for the quarter, which would be consistent to a five-lane cross-section with two travel lanes in both directions, as most of Route 30 is. We would be looking to add pedestrian and bike facilities and implement access management and other safety issues. Our initial efforts have been focused on the stretch of Lancaster between Plainbrook and Church Road. Some of the benefits that are realized with implementation of this plan would be safety. We would see a 68% reduction in total annual crashes. Our crashes in this quarter are well above the average median in Chester County at this point in time, as I'm sure Chief Jaeger can attest to. And we would also improve safety from an improved emergency response time due to the congestion. We would improve pedestrian mobility and connectivity with 1.8 miles of sidewalk being added and designated bike lanes, as I had mentioned. Accessible bus stops. Our poor residents at this point in time stand on the road, and the bus stop is a telephone pole. We would also include economic competitiveness in the quality of life along that quarter and increase and improve access for employment along Route 30. We would see a significant reduction in travel time and delays during peak hours. From an environmental standpoint, there'd be a significant reduction in idling time resulting in less air pollution. So we are keeping our fingers crossed. And John, as far as getting results on the raised grant to help with the funding, any other thoughts that I, points that I missed? John has been, John has been one of our key team members on this project for the last year, year and a half.
Really nothing new to report, although we're getting more information to the folks that are helping, hopefully getting ahold of Secretary Buttigieg. We expect the announcement to come this week, consistent with what happened last year. Nothing new to report.
Okay. So we're in a wait-and-see situation. Any questions from the public? Donna, anyone online? Okay. Next is Al and Jen. And our Route 2930 beautification project has been completed, correct? It's looking pretty good out there. Donna, do we have a slide up there? For anyone who hasn't seen it yet or gone by it. This has been a layer of love for a couple of years. If you recall, it was just a concrete slab of ugliness. And I'm happy with the way it looks. And I have to commend Peter Fixler today, who was driving by, and somebody had already stuck in a yard sign advertising their business, which Mr. Fixler jumped out of that truck, grabbed it. So please keep the signs off of there. They'll be removed.
So we have a couple of questions.
Public comment, okay.
Bill and Barb, go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. Barbara Arnold here, 31 Font Stock Road. I drive by that every day, and it looks great. So thank you very much for doing that. But the potholes that are just passed there in front of the Holiday Inn remain, and they are large, and I know it's not the township's problem, but do you know if anybody is going to work on that to get that fixed?
Thanks, Barb. And I appreciate you pointing out that that is not our road. So the responsibility does not fall. If it did, Mr. Neild would be out there fixing it right now, wouldn't you, John? I guess at this point in time, contacting the standard PennDOT pothole 800 number would be the best way to go.
Okay, I've done it before. I'll do it again. Thank you.
Nikki? 29 and 30? And so Barbara, so you know that that is, State Senator Kathy Muth's staff person, Nikki Whitlock, who's going to try to make a phone call for us tomorrow.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you, Nikki.
I met you the other night on the Zoom thing, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
So there's another question. Carol Rapp?
Yes, hi. I wanted to comment. I also think it looks very nice. My only concern is, what is the plan to keep those plants watered? So that they don't die, like if we go through another month like we just did? Of no rain?
I'll take this one. This is Peter Fixler speaking, Carol. I believe, as communicated to me by the engineer, that the contractor that installed the plants has them guaranteed for a year. Is that correct now? 12 months to either replace or keep them alive for that year. So hopefully that'll allow them to become established and not be a watering maintenance issue in the future.
Okay. I would just hate to see all that money, you know, and have it all turned brown on us.
If that doesn't work, we're going to have a Friday afternoon rain dance party to try to create natural rain. Next, Catherine, if you can give us some updates on the upcoming events?
So we have some initiatives going on in the township that we want to do an increased communication job on, just getting those things out to the public and the board as soon as they're planned. So I'm just going to run down through a few things. This would be the rest of our summer plans and into the fall. Our next summer concert is on June 21st. This is also the longest day of the year. So this is a blues fest. It'll be a longer concert because we have the benefit of the increased daylight. And then if you just want to mark your calendars as well for July 19th and also August 16th for those additional events. And music kicks off at 6:30 PM, and this is at Valley Creek Park. The police will be hosting the annual National Night Out. This is taking place on August 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This will be at Valley Creek, actually, to be determined on location. We'll have some more information at the next board meeting. This will be finalized. Offerings will include a touch-a-truck event, meet and greet with the police, public works, and fire department. We're hoping to have some games, free food. It's a great opportunity to come out and enjoy the evening. We're also hosting our movie night in the park. The Park of Rackboard will be hosting the Super Mario Brothers movie. This will be shown on Saturday, August 26th, starting at 6:30 PM at Valley Creek Park. Free popcorn will be provided while supplies last. And stay tuned because there may be an additional movie night as well. And finally, moving into the fall season, there'll be a trunk-or-treat event here and also utilizing the Fire Company property. This will be October 29th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. More details will come on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Catherine. You still have the podium with the update on the Balderson property?
Next up. So last month, we provided an update to the board via the EPA's update on when they'd be issuing the records of decision, which I'll just remind you will be coming in July, August timeframe. But in the meantime, we wanted to just give you an interim update because we know the board and residents are really interested in this property. There will be some interim remedial measures that are going to be taken on the site. This will be some surface soil excavation. Basically, they're just going to be scraping the surface, doing some shallow excavation of the contaminated areas. It's only going to be about one truckload full, but we know there's a lot of eyes on the site going on there. So we just want to make sure people are aware and the board's aware that you will see some limited activity going on on the site, probably in the next few months. And that's what the work is, the scope of work that will be done there.
Any questions? Okay. Moving on. MS4 program?
I believe we have a representative here to give a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Talea. I work with Arrow. And I work with the township to comply with its MS4 permit. For those that might not know, MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. What that means is the township has been issued a MS4 permit by DEP stating that the township must demonstrate a reduction in pollutants from entering its surface waterways through a number of requirements that are required annually as well as on a five-year cycle. The current permit runs from 2020 to 2025. So what I'd like to do is give an update on some activities that have been ongoing as well as announce some information that we are required to communicate to the public under the permit. So the biggest thing that I'd like to talk about is the township's five-year pollution reduction plan. Some of you may have been aware that the township has this requirement to implement water quality improvement projects over a five-year cycle. And previously, the township had submitted a pollution reduction plan, which has been approved by DEP. That was back in 2020. And so currently, the township has an approved plan. However, the township was approached by another permit holder about a year ago about a potential project partnership. And this partnership would take place in Valley Creek as well as over at Ecology Park, as well as on this property to do a combined stream restoration project. And so over the past couple of months, myself and township staff have been working on the logistics of that project, figuring out how much credit the township will get for that project, how much credit the other permit holder will get for that project. And in summary, our conclusion was that based upon the proposal provided by representatives from the Turnpike and PennDOT, their engineer presented an acceptable plan that would meet the township's permit requirements in terms of how much credit the township will get. They would also get some credit. And based upon the estimated price that was provided, we thought it was a fair proposal. And currently, that representative from the Turnpike and PennDOT's side has provided contracts and agreements to the township. I'm not exactly sure if the township has executed any of those agreements yet, but that is the proposed plan that we have on the table. And again, from our perspective, it's a fair proposal. It would get us the township credit. And it would also fulfill the township's five-year requirement up until 2025.
That's through 2025, December 31st, 2025, right?
Correct. So these projects will fulfill our requirement until the year 2025, after which we will be given another permit for 2020. Well, there is somewhat of a stall in terms of the next cycle's requirements. You either have a general permit or an individual permit. All general permit holders, their permit is up this year, really this month. And DEP has said we are not issuing any new permits, at least for another two years. So keep doing the, essentially keep doing the minimum control measures, as they're called. But they're not announcing what the next five-year cycle pollution reduction plan requirements are just yet. The township's in a in-between situation where we're an individual permit holder. Our permit does not expire until 2025. So we expect that the next permit cycle will be 2025 until 2030, but we don't know for sure. But we should plan for another set of five-year PRP requirements. And I don't anticipate that MS4 is blowing away anytime soon. So this will be an ongoing reoccurring requirement.
Who determines the number of credits we need every five years?
So the number of credits is based upon the current land cover of the township. So essentially, what you do is, we, the township intersects with a number of waterways. A number of waterways are determined to be impaired by DEP. And so essentially, you have to do a calculation of how much land do you have? What type of land do you have? Do you have more pervious surface? Do you have more impervious hard surface? And based upon how your land cover, you essentially get a estimated level of pollution that is being contributed by the township into those waterways currently. And you have to reduce sediment pollution by 10% every five years. So it's essentially an exercise of looking at the land in the township and then figuring out what your 10% sediment reduction is for your impaired waterways over a five.
It's a cumulative number then, 10% of the immediately preceding base?
Yeah. So essentially, what we do is, well, the township is broken up into different watersheds. So you can either choose to put projects in different watersheds based upon different values. So you can either choose to put projects in different watersheds based upon different values. Or you can look at the cumulative, uh, pollution, uh, which means if you do it that way, you can put projects in any part of the township, not just in specific.
To complete our credits for this year, we're have this arrangement with the guy who's gonna get the credits from Pendot. But in addition to that, we need to do work ourselves, correct?
So, so the, uh, idea is that, uh, we have a sediment reduction requirement. Uh, Turnpike, Pendot also have their own MS four permits with their own requirements. Um, and so for example, uh, Valley Creek over at Valley Park, we would do a combined project. We would get a certain number of credits based upon how much stream reach is available there. So essentially we'd be splitting up credits with the other permit holders.
And then in addition to that, estimates for us to do additional work? Couple million dollars is what I recall? Is that act fairly accurate?
Right. So I believe that the estimate from, uh, the vendor, who, who was here at a previous meeting. Uh, his estimate for the total project cost to get the credits that the township requires as well as credits for, for his permit holders. Is about one point seven million dollars. Um, and granted, most of the municipalities in this part of the state, highly urbanized areas, uh, impaired waterways. Have a fairly significant high pollution reduction plan requirement. Um, I believe that our requirement is, is around three hundred and thirty thousand, uh, pounds of sediment reduction, which is significant. Uh, so, uh, but looking at how many credits we would get compared to the cost that was proposed. Um, uh, we did analysis of other stream restoration projects and how much they cost, how much credits were allocated. Uh, our, our summary was that it was a fair cost for how many credits we'd be getting for this effort.
Do you expect there to be other future joint projects available? Or can we expect every five years to have to budget at least two, maybe three million dollars? Just on this mandate from, this comes down from federal to the state to us. It's an unfunded mandate?
Correct. So this all starts at the federal level. The federal government tells states that they have to regulate stormwater within their jurisdiction. And then the state tells municipalities that they have to regulate stormwater within their jurisdiction. Um, so this requirement is not going away. There are a number of lawsuits against the state of Pennsylvania for polluting. The, uh, Chesapeake Bay, for example. So, uh, yes, this is getting passed down to municipalities as a requirement to improve water quality. Uh, we don't anticipate that this requirement is blowing away. Um, and without knowing exactly what the requirements are, I can't say for certain what our total sediment reduction's gonna need to be for the next five-year cycle. Um, but we should plan, yes, for at least what we are having to restore now to play into place.
And based on the last presentation, am I correct that to the extent there might be. Any development that goes on in your township during that period, you get no credit for that?
So for any project that are you, that, that is used to fulfill a stormwater obligation. So say that there is a shopping center that goes in, if they put in a huge stormwater basin. Um, because that basin was used to fulfill that development's stormwater obligation, we can't count that as pollution reduction credit. What we can do is retrofit existing stormwater basins or, or a swale that's already, uh, built. Retrofit, upgrade it and get credit there. Um, so actually, myself and the township staff have identified a number of township-owned. Uh, properties and locations that have stormwater utilities where township owns a property. We could retrofit what's there now and get credit. But for any new development, residential, commercial, if it's, if that, uh, project, if that stormwater infrastructure is built and utilized to meet. Stormwater development obligations, uh, we can't double count that towards our pollution reduction plan.
Do we first need to get permits for any work that we do from D E P?
You mean for these restoration projects?
Yes.
Yes, because so they're likely to, so they're stream restoration projects. We do anticipate that there, uh, will be a number of permits that we need to get, uh, in order to be allowed to construct. Uh, the type of stream restoration that, uh, the vendor is proposing. Um, and so assuming that the township would execute this agreement. Um, the idea is that, uh, we have to update our pollution reduction plan to include, include these projects. The vendor has to update Pendot's and the Turnpike's pollution reduction plans to, to include these projects. They have to be approved by D E P. Um, and, you know, based upon what he's provided so far, we don't see any issues with these projects. You know, potentially not getting approved, but, uh, assuming that the township gets the agreement executed. Uh, and, uh, D E P accepts the revised P R P. Uh, the vendor was hoping to potentially start survey work, uh, in the fall. And it would take about a year to get the required permits, finish the design and, uh, beacon construction efforts for those projects.
So if D E P takes more than a year or however long, and we can't meet the five-year period, it's our fault. Even though D E P is dragging their feet and can't get the work done.
So we have a deadline for when our pollution reduction plan projects are required. Um, on paper, if we don't meet that deadline, then technically we are out of compliance with our permit. Uh, having said that, um, just like the stormwater ordinance update last year. D E P acknowledges the level of effort that goes into these activities and actually, in, in the case of the ordinance, D E P sent out an email saying, look. We understand that this is, is a significant effort. At minimum, you need to demonstrate that you are making, uh, effort to update your ordinance. By the original due date. If it's not done, we will be understanding. Um, so our permit says that our projects are due by a certain date, but, um, just my opinion would be. Uh, as long as we are demonstrating significant effort to meet these requirements, uh, that's a lot different in enforcement in terms of. If we chose to do nothing at all and just, and, and just, you know, sat on our hands, so, um.
All right. Yeah, that's all I have.
And I, um, I also have a presentation here. Um, and so, um. Yeah, for time purposes, I was going to, uh, verbally go over this. I will post this presentation online. Sorry, I'm kinda going out of order, so. Um, so I'll, I'll just go through my presentation and I'll post my presentation on the website for, for review. It's, it's a bit long, so. But, but that's information about our pollution reduction plan projects. Um, uh, on top of that, we are also fulfilling the obligations of our other minimum control measures. Um, so, uh, for example, we have, uh, put out, uh, new educational materials on the website. We have new educational materials printed out in the township office. Um, we have a interactive survey that we encourage the public to, uh, participate in that is on the website. Um, so we encourage the public to go check out those resources. Um, if you would like to get involved with stormwater, you know, in a volunteer, uh, capacity, we encourage you to call us. And I'm sure that we could put you to good use in some way. Um, another, uh, item that we are required to talk about is illicit discharge. Um, and so the summary there is for the, for the public, if it's not stormwater, it shouldn't go in a storm drain. Um, and, uh, the township is required to maintain a illicit discharge reporting mechanism on its website, uh, which we have. Uh, so if you see somebody dumping something down a storm drain or somebody, um, uh, doing something to a storm basin that does, that, that does not look like. Uh, it should be happening, we encourage you to report those instances to the township and, uh, staff will, will let us know. We can, uh, do an illicit discharge inspection. Um, but again, the rule of thumb is if it's not stormwater, it shouldn't go down a storm drain. So that means grass clippings, um, any runoff from, uh, uh, vehicles, any or, uh, organic debris from your yard. Um, and that's not because we wanna be the police here. It's, it's a requirement under our permit. Um, and so, uh, on top of that too, D E P has been conducting audits for permit holders over the past two years. We've actually been involved in four over the past year or two. Um, so, uh, if D E P would say that they're coming out to do an audit, I believe that we are prepared. We have the checklist to know what they will be looking for, but at any point they can call us and say that they wanna come out and do an audit. So, um, this is why we are advertising and saying these things to the public because of the requirement. Um, we will submit our annual report to the state, uh, in September. Um, and, uh, on top of that, we are moving forward with all of our required activities like staff training. Looking at stormwater B M Ps that are in the township now. Um, and we will also be meeting internally as a team, myself and the township staff to identify, um, other potential. Projects that we can utilize for our P R P, uh, uh, requirements, either in this five-year cycle or the next five-year cycle. So even though we are on that five-year cycle to do projects, it, it, uh, makes sense, in, in my opinion, to move forward with projects. Um, now and bank the credit for down the road. That also leaves more time to apply for grants for those projects as well. Um, so that's my, uh, condensed presentation. Um, if anyone, anyone has any questions or comments at this time, I'd be happy to take them.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thanks. Next on the agenda is, uh, an update regarding the Route three fifty-two overpass. Some time ago, I challenged, um, our traffic engineer to come up with a solution pertaining to the, um. Number of vehicles that end up getting stuck underneath our three fifty-two, um, bridge. Um, and what, what, I wanted to give you an update as, as far as they've been working on. They've been working on this and through the traffic committee and, uh, allow you to understand what's, what may be occurring. While this, this overpass is not our property, our ownership. Um, it's not our road, but we're seeking solutions and trying to help. So they've kinda determined that on an average approximately, we get one hit per month. And, uh, more when trucks try to back up into the area. But they looked at consider installation of an overheight detection and warning system. They looked at pursuing grant funding, possible candidate for an Arlie Grant application. Were some concerns as far as who would own the overheight warning system, likely the township. If it was treated as a signal, consider additional flashing lights on the bridge. Um, so they've reached out and sent a letter to Pendot and we're waiting to reply on that. But again, it's, it's something that is problematic out there and we wanted to try to do something to, to, uh, to come up with a solution pertaining to that. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Next, um, is. Well, I guess, uh, tonight we would like to acknowledge, uh, our former town manager. With his second retirement festivities from East Whiteland Township in, in six months. You plan that well, John. Um. Couple of things I would, I, I would like to say, and we're talking about John Nagel. Following really a long career in public service and being our township manager from April two thousand and fifteen. To December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. John stepped down as the manager, but during that time, going forward, well, during that time, uh, he helped steer the township. Really onto some finite, financially sound footings. And then has continued to help us and assist us in some important high-level projects during the past six months. There's numerous ones. I, I'm just gonna pick out one just to give you some idea, but. As we've talked about here, the Route thirty-quarter and the grant and the twenty-three million dollars and everything. But he was a key member of the raise grant team. And John really did help us maneuver through the federal grant process, which is a interesting process, let me tell you. Um, legislative and state outreach programs, trying to get community support, dealing with multiple levels of Pendot. Um, uh, putting together and doing presentations with me. He and I have had a hundred and fifty-eight meetings in the last twelve months, at my count. Um, to prospective legislators, to different sources. Um, and it's been an interesting process and it's still ongoing. Um, but that was a, that was one project that really, your help was. Tremendous to get us to where we are at this point in time. We still got, uh, we still got, uh, gotta get it over the park one more time. There were other areas that John got involved with, including key banking issues. Helping us, uh, identify safe, competitive, um, interest rates for the fifty-four million dollars received for the sewer sale. And a whole host of other things he was involved. But personally, you know, I, I just have to appreciate. Your efforts and, uh, your time. Um, and I, I think, I think Peter and Rich may want to say, and Steve. May have a few comments as well.
Yeah, I echo what Scott said especially.
Thought we did this in December.
I thought, really, that's why this will be short.
Thank you. Get out.
Especially, I wouldn't go that far. Especially in the financial, thanks. We, we are very, on a very firm financial footing at this point. We thank you for that.
Thank you, John. I've learned a lot.
I, I just, I'll keep this short as well. Uh, I just wanna thank John. I, I think I probably did before, but thank him publicly for bringing me onto staff in twenty, twenty seventeen. Twenty seventeen, and I have, uh, learned a lot from John and, and. I've appreciated his guidance and, and mentorship and advice to me along the way. And, and I hope I can continue to do him right, uh, as I am now serving in the role that John recently served in as township manager. So thank you, John, and I wanna wish you, wish you well in future endeavors.
Thank you. Now I'm actually prepared this time to say something, so last time it was off the cuff. Uh, first, Scott, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about my retirement. For the three current board members, and I'll address individually. To Scott, you were the first board member that I ever mentored. Uh, we learned a lot from each other. Your vision, leadership and passion on project is unmatched and admirable. We shared not one, but two game fives of the World Series last year, which I'll never forget. To Rich, we had a great synergy, as Rich has alluded to, with a common interest in knowledge and finance. We considered some tough issues, tax policy, COVID, uh, what-if, uh, budgeting and also organization rightsizing. And that can go up or down, so, uh, a lot of tough issues, uh, that we dealt with. I truly appreciate your pragmatic, measured and strategic approach. I do look forward to not seeing you on the golf course, but on the trail, as you know my, what my golf game. Non-existent. To Peter, while our time was so much short, you always took a thoughtful approach on issues. I still owe you a budget primer. Uh, I learned where you got your public sec, uh, public sector passion from. And it's gonna be close to where we'll be moving to sometime in the near future. All of you, thanks for your support. It's the most important need of a municipal manager is. There's some folks that actually hired me that aren't here any longer to build homes. Your loyalty to staff and caring for your constituents is what. I will most remember and appreciate. As chair, you took the most blame for the sins of the past when you did not have to. With all due respect to the others here and in other places, I regret not having you remain on the board. To the two other, uh, folks that hired me, John, Mont and Bill Rabbley, our time together was also less than a year. Uh, John was always proud to announce that he helped hire me. When he moved to Arrow, he would always look out for the township's best interest. Bill Rabbley and I shared labor relations experience in different industries. And our extended families also had ties to the North Pan area, which we found out later after I was hired. And I shared some of that with Bernadette earlier tonight. Uh, Sue Drummond, Sue challenged me and made me a better municipal manager. That should come as no surprise to them. As chair, she always had me at her side for two main reasons. To show that we were a team and to help her succeed as an elected official. I will never forget when we attended Mass in Downingtown, and I'll leave it at that. So, uh, Steve, I call Steve my co-manager. Steve frequently carried more than half the shared load. And I recognize that and I. load, and I recognize that, and I repeatedly told him that. We would always defer to, he would always defer to and respect me as township manager. I tried to do the same when he was promoted. Our styles mesh very well, even though our personalities are different. To Catherine, while I have not worked long with Catherine, from what I see and hear, you will help Steve take this organization to another level. I look forward to that from afar. Two others that aren't here, Naveen Rahawi and Pat Harvey. Naveen and Pat made quite a duo. It was my goal to raise Naveen up as the lead negotiator on our labor contracts, and she did a great job. Although their top projects were grueling, an employee handbook that was an extreme makeover, two labor contracts successfully negotiated and one extended and codified, all in the course of one year. We didn't always agree, but our discussions were thought-provoking and collegial. With three labor unions at one non-union workforce, labor relations is most constant and challenging here. To Joe McGory and Bernadette Kearney, I would be remiss in not referencing Joe. He was our rock and our defender. It was not surprising that Joe was back up to Halley Long at Villanova. He led us in many ways. His logic and practicality is what I remember most. He always respected and supported me. As to Bernadette, Bernadette actually and I served in another municipality in another life. She has admirably filled some big shoes while being her own person. Her transition with our board has been seamless. To the rest of the management and staff, it was a privilege to work with you over the years. Best wishes as our organization continues to evolve. The residents, businesses, and commuters, this is a good community with the potential to be great. We provide excellent service, and our menu of offerings will grow and diversify as does this community. And finally, to the folks that I've worked for before, East Whiteland, Montgomery, Whit paint Townships in Montgomery County, public financial management in somewhat of the private sector, City of Reading, and various banks. For those of you I've worked with, it's been a great run. I stand on the shoulders of some extraordinary leaders, past and present. I hope that I have met or feel your expectations. That concludes my report. Out of the main event, we will be, Zach will be leading us pertaining to the Chester County Planning Commission Starter Home Pilot Program that we would like to have a discussion on and learn from and gather as much information as possible. Although I do see we have an immediate question? I'm sorry, Martin? We have public comments towards the end of the meeting. Now, at this point, we're going to move on with the affordable housing. I stand corrected, there is on number three, public hearings. There are none. So I'm not sure.
Good evening, Martin Watts. I've wrote, yeah, I have two short questions in regard to a public hearing which should have been scheduled to take place here tonight, aren't it? Donating map amendment for one. The board at its May 10th meeting unanimously voted to continue the public, a date certain. While the board has not conducted the public hearing this evening, it has not voted on a continuance of the public hearing. Question is, what are the legal and procedural implications of not voting this evening, public hearing?
So I can answer that. Because it's a legislative decision, they can do, there's no timeframe for them to do anything. So if they decide they're not going to have a hearing, they don't have to have a hearing. There's no issue with any timeframes as to when they have to have a hearing, in the sense that they could decide just not to proceed with the hearing.
What does it mean that you're not continuing the public hearing?
I can...
Yeah, we're not continuing it.
We would just have to re-advertise the hearing.
If they wanted to consider it at a later date, same with any other zoning, they'd have to re-advertise it.
Okay, so the board at an assessment meeting, they have authorized publication?
Yeah, we'd have to do the procedure all over again, correct?
Second question is, the board previously authorized the expansion of township funds for environmental assessment. I made a right-to-no-law request for that environmental assessment, but it was denied by the township. So my question is this: will the township be making the environmental assessment available for public inspection prior to the public hearing? When and if?
We're only permitted to, only if they acquire the property are we permitted to allow the public to see it. Otherwise, we are not permitted. Unless the property owner were to say to us, "Feel free to do it," yeah, we're not permitted to do it.
Even though the township's pending an environmental assessment?
I'm sorry?
Even though the township's...
Right, the right-to-no law is very clear on that. We are not, the township is not to, we don't own that property. We have not acquired that property. We are not to permit environmental reports and those type of reports to be seen by the public.
So the township cannot, even though the request was denied under the right-to-no law, the township is saying it's really a decision to release the environmental assessment up to the property owner?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's the property owner that makes the decision for the environmental assessment.
Yeah, if you wanted to release the reports to the township, you could certainly do that. If somebody, but we can't do it. If somebody gave us permission and said, "I want you to put it on the website," we could do that, but we're not permitted to do that. Under the law, we're not permitted to do that. If someone said, "I'll waive the law," we could do that.
Okay, my concern is, is the funds funded the environmental assessments?
Right, certainly.
Seems kind of odd. Public doesn't have...
Maybe you should speak to a legislator.
Anyhow, there are my questions.
Seeing no other questions, again, we can move on to our, the Chester County Planning Commission Starter Home Pilot Project. Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Bill DeGuffre. I'm the Community Planning Director of the Chester County Planning Commission, and I'm joined by Libby Horowitz, who's our Senior Housing and Economic. I thank Zach for inviting us here to talk today, and the board for hearing us out. This Starter Home Pilot Project initiative...
Can I, I'm getting a direction from the back that they're having a hard time hearing you. If you could talk into the mic so everybody can hear you.
All right. I just said thank you for having us here so far. But so this Starter Home Pilot Project Initiative is something that we've started at the Planning Commission to sort of address two things. One is rising housing prices, and the, and we've noticed that the number of housing that is attainable for people has been going down. So I'm going to turn it over to Libby. She's going to explain how we are hoping to address that. And this is really just supposed to be the start of a conversation. We're not asking for the board to make any decision at this point. So I'll turn it over to Libby.
Yeah, just a little more background on why we started this program. Housing prices are rising across the county. Looking at the county, they were actually up median housing price, that's not average, median, was $466,000 last year. That's actually up from 2015. It was $310,000, so that's really a significant increase. Seeing the same thing in East Whiteland in 2015, $373,000, and in 2022, $580,000 was your median price. So we're really just starting to see this become an issue. People are really becoming priced out. This has always been sort of more of an issue with more of the affordable, so more of the looking at under 80% area median income. But as Bill mentioned, this is really increasing to be a problem for higher income, up to maybe 125% of area median income. So looking at just sort of cost burden, when we are looking at, that's paying up to more than 30% of your housing or income towards housing costs. In Chester County, we have 26% of our population is cost burdened. East Whiteland, you have 23%. And what's unique about East Whiteland is a lot of that's actually in your 75,000 or more earners. 14% are cost burdened compared to 8%. That's why we're really looking at expanding. So we're talking about not affordable housing, we're really talking about more attainable housing. So more middle-income housing is what this program is aiming to address. We're really looking for this to be a proof-of-concept program. And what it's trying to accomplish is, end goal is having some homes constructed that will be in the missing middle sort of form. So we're looking at smaller housing forms that are twins, townhomes, duplexes, and these are going to be for-sale homes, not rental units. Really looking at those styles of homes, and hopefully under $355,000 price. We're really looking. And that's just based off of any affordable price for the 100% area median income. So what this program can offer is, what we're looking to do is, we're looking to find a few sites, very specific sites, not looking for all sites or huge spots of land, but really individual parcels. And we're looking to have those become proof of concepts for these homes. What we would do with the county, as the county, is we would write some updated zoning language as needed. We would also connect to developers who are interested in developing this. We're also able to create example performas and site plans. We also should mention, and I always want to plug, that we have other programs available too. I know that you do currently have a Vision Partnership Program with us, but we're also able to do more general zoning review and give a lot of data. Also, always happy to give more of that as well. And all we're really looking for you to do, and I should say that this is very much, as Bill mentioned, an ongoing conversation. We're not looking for final commitment. We're really just looking for the first step of starting this conversation. So what we are looking for your help with is identification of sites. Preferably, we're looking for township-owned sites, but we're also open to nonprofit sites, public-private partnership sites. For example, if a larger business has extra land that they're looking to use something, that would be an ideal. And we would also be looking for the willingness to re-sign parcels eventually. I should say, we envision this as a two-phase process. So that first phase is really more of an academic experience. So it's going to be more of the analyzing those sites, doing some site plans, seeing if we can get the pro formas to work out, and if we can, moving forward with those as well.
Liz, can I interrupt? One quick question pertaining to development sites. As you know, the township is only allowed to pay a assessed value on these properties to acquire them, which, as you know, we run up against developers that are paying substantially over those costs. Is there any incentive to any of the landowners to perhaps get into this program versus a developer coming to them?
Not at this time. Yeah, and that's why we're really just looking at initial interest right now, because we understand that. We understand that's a challenge. So really, what we're looking to have happen next is just have initial conversations, understand what your potential needs are, what your potential opportunities are, and just see if this would be a good fit. We're not trying to push anything that's not going to fit. Again, we're looking for sort of smaller housing styles that's going to fit in with the existing.
Is the county considering any funding for this kind of thing, other than just the planning, coordination, and doing the, what a developer would do when they perform due diligence?
At this time, we're really looking at more of the coordination, and so our main help is the technical side with the zoning, and we are able to...
Are you doing, you're doing this countywide, I assume, and going municipality to municipality?
Yeah, so we're, again, we're seeking interest. So where we're at right now is, we've had a few meetings with different municipalities. What we do is, as we said, just having those conversations, seeing what sites might be available. Again, there's no final commitment. That is really just looking at what might you have, where could this program really fit? We're looking to do that really through the end of summer.
So, Libby, you're looking for some sort of indication from us by the end of the summer that we'd be interested in participating in the conversation and the process?
Yeah, I mean, we are willing to start the initial process up to the end of summer. So as I said, when I say indication of interest, it doesn't seem very formal. What we mean by that just is, and we have that in conversation. And based on that, we can together decide if it's...
Can I ask a question? Do the sites have to be, I guess, quote-unquote, blank sites to be filled in, or could they potentially be tear downs of sites? I'm just trying to
Yeah, we would be open...
Imagine what we have in the neighborhood, the township.
We'd be open to looking at any sites. Again, we very much want to work with municipalities as we know municipal situation is very different, and we want to make sure that that doesn't fit in with the... But we do have another site and another municipality that is looking
I would be interested in continuing conversation. It's not going to be easy if it's township land or nonprofit. You know, all our land is parkland or where we're standing right now. So it's just not the easiest thing in the world, but it's a great idea because young people cannot afford a house. They cannot. It's impossible. It's insane. And this is with high interest rates now, the way the supply, I don't supply-demand right now, but it's only going to get worse when interest rates come down. So, yeah, it's worth trying, sure.
I appreciate you folks putting together a program like this. It's a topic that's we've struggled with in conversations and dealing with developers, and it's, it needs to be addressed, and I give you credit, and thanks for doing that. And I think we have a question from Nikki. If you can come up to the mic, please.
Good evening, and I just had a few questions in regards to the program. So is there like identifiers of the people who, once the homes are built, are there certain qualifications or limitations on income? Would the township be able to say that it has to be an East Whiteland resident that's eligible to buy as a first-time home buyer? What does that look like? Will the township get to set those rules? Would there be help with a down payment for that family that's trying to buy their first home and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, thank you. I can say that a lot of that is going to be municipal-based, also very much working with the developers. So as far as income limits and income requirements, and who's actually going to be selling the homes, that would be the developer's responsibilities. As far as determining what, how those homes are sold or what the income limits are, we were looking at 100% area median income, but we could, we would be flexible if the municipality had specific changes that they wanted to make for that, requirements. And there would not be help at this time for down payment.
So I, as a young adult, was part of a first-time home buyer program in Alexandria City, Virginia, which is a high, high level of cost of living even back then. And so that program where developers were, came to a municipality and they... And so that program where developers were, came to a municipality and they were required to designate a percentage of those new homes for the first-time, first-time home buyer. So say if you bought, if you built a hundred homes and ten percent of them had to be, had to be dedicated to the program, is that something that has been evaluated as productive use of doing a home, for this purpose of having attainable, I love that word, attainable housing for Chester County first-time home buyers?
So I can talk, that's a little bit of inclusionary zoning, which is still sort of questionable Pennsylvania-wise, whether that's legal or not. So there are some, and this is, the, as far as requiring certain amounts to be affordable on a broad scale, inclusionary zoning. So there are some areas that do do that and have continued to do that because they haven't been challenged, but others, that's why it's not as widely done in Pennsylvania is my understanding.
So my other question was.
Yep.
In the county?
Yeah, we are welcome to work, we're welcoming all townships. Generally, we're finding that townships who are more interested are largely located sort of in boroughs or around boroughs, as would make sense.
Oh, and I guess the other question I had was about land ownership. If a nonprofit.
That's something I'd have to look into. And I did forget to mention, we are looking to deed restrict the sites as well, to keep those affordable. Thanks. And again, please feel free to email me with any questions, it's always appreciated. Also, happy to give other resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know the county's not really looking for any formal action or anything like that, but if it's something the board is interested in, staff can certainly set up a meeting with the county to kind of see what, what shape that might take, what kind of opportunities there might be for the township. Is that something that more would like us to move forward with, or would you like some more time to sort of mull it over?
No, I think, again, it's something that we've talked a little bit about. I think, I think we'd like to learn more, get educated, and see if we can get some of our residents into one of these situations. That'd be great if we could. So pursue it, please.
Yep, will do.
Reggie, Peter?
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, logistically, like I said, it's not going to be the easiest thing in the world. Our land is usually parkland, even if we had excess parkland. A lot of the park we acquired is subject to restrictions on either federal funding or state, so that would have to be worked through also. So it's a great idea, it's sorely needed. You know, I have a son who's a mechanical engineer, engaged, they live in an apartment. The landlord raised their rent twenty percent last year. That just keeps them in an apartment for another year. So it's insane what's out there now.
Liz, I've got something in mind, and this is out of the box, but if we had a vacant historic home here in the township, could that resource be put into this program? It could. Okay, all right. Now we're going to the action portion with board motions and resolutions. Steve, if you can lead us on foray with the front desk.
Thank you, Scott. As of June 5th, we have a new employee, part-time front desk office assistant, who's performing various duties, including traditional receptionist functions that I think staff and the board agrees that were needed, as we were starting to have problems with responding to folks with phone calls and walk-ins, and it was becoming a burden to different departments and some individuals on our staff. So we're happy to have Tara McDavid on board. She comes to us, she's very experienced and interviewed very well, and thus far, almost two weeks in, I think she's been doing a great job. Donna, I don't know if you want to add anything, otherwise, we just asked the board to ratify the hiring of her.
No, I just, thanks, thank you guys for hiring her.
Donna was one that was shouldering a lot of the burden. I'll say it, yeah, Donna was taking a lot of calls and spending a lot of time on issues and matters that she really shouldn't have been, as was the police department. Thank you, chief.
I'm glad things are working out. I've had a couple situations come up where Tara's been very helpful with me. So Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to. I'd like to make a motion to hire the part-time front desk office assistant, Tara McDavid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As is, as we continue the retirement night festivities, I would like to give a shout-out and a little comment or two pertaining to one of our volunteer committee persons. You know, volunteers provide a really invaluable amount of help to improve the community, and all of our volunteer committees, like the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Committee, the Zoning Hearing Board, the Planning Commission, Historical, and Park and Rec Recreation has done a tremendous job, and a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into it. And the current Park and Rec chairman, Chuck Barbera, began in Parks and Rec in 2016, and in 2021 became chair, and he has shown a tremendous amount of leadership with helping on a number of projects, especially the Backton Hill Park with Phase One and Phase Two. He was also very prevalently involved with the Prose Plan, Friends of the Stage, helping concerts. He helped create some subcommittees that really got people involved from the committee, and he is retiring and moving out of the area. So he may be listening, he may not, but certainly a tremendous leader, put a lot of effort into it, and we wish him well. I know Steve and I worked a lot with him on the Park and Rec side. If you've got other thoughts, or did I steal your thunder?
No, I think you hit the highlights, you've hit the highlights, Scott. He's been a real asset to the Park and Rec board and to the township, and we're sorry to see him move on.
And as one parts, one comes new, announcing that the Park and Rec Committee voted to appoint Tom O'Neill as the new chairperson for Park and Rec. So I guess we need to officially make a motion to accept his resignation.
Sure. Motion to accept Chuck Barbera's resignation from Park and Rec, wish him well in the future.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve, any additional thoughts here regarding the pension OPEB?
I have not met Ryan Dogerty myself, but I hear he's highly qualified, and John's stepping up to the mic, and John can help with this. So again, I believe him to be highly qualified and well-suited for the opening.
What I would add is, we've recently brought in some new volunteers to the Pension and OPEB Board. John Thompson was a recent addition, and the extra benefit with John was he actually recommended Ryan for an open spot. So we've done all the vetting with Ryan, passed with flying colors, and I believe he attended the last pension meeting, if I'm not mistaken. So he's ready to hit the ground running, he's got a very impressive resume.
And we did full vetting involved with the process, right? Okay. Thanks, chief. Any questions, comments? Would you like to make a motion, Peter?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ryan Dogerty to the Pensions and OPEB Board for a three-year term ending in 2026.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Ryan is approved. Mr. Retiree, are you in overtime?
Am I in all the time?
Well, I don't know, are you all, but are you in at overtime? You're in overtime, Rob.
Did you prepare for this?
Time and a half? Can we hit them with time and a half?
I haven't been paid overtime since I was a paper boy.
All right. So you're doing this gratis?
You'll have to talk to my attorney. Anyway, I'll try to keep this short. We actually have been working on this project now for probably over a year. With the increase in interest rates recently, it became more imperative to do something with our investments. On top of that, we, as has been mentioned numerous times here tonight, we were the beneficiary of the sewer sale proceeds. So we really needed to get better at investing our money. At one point, we were getting one basis points, and for the folks that don't do banking or investments, that's basically one-tenth of one percent. So, and now you're looking at rates above five percent for institutional investors like us. So anyway, we put out an RFP, there was five banks that were invited, or investment firms that were invited, the incumbents, KeyBank, Public Financial Management, or Pliget as they're known, the products are known, Chase, JP Morgan Chase, Gerard, which is an arm of Univest Bank, and Public Financial Management, along with Wilmington Trust, and, well, KeyBank, I already mentioned those. The leading candidates, well, let me, let me back up a little bit. Rich Orlo was on the presentation and interview board, along with the OPEB Pension and OPEB members, and that would, I want to especially thank Steve Schmidt, John Thompson, and Bob Logan for their efforts. Steve and Bob actually brought new entities to the table, I think, that produced some pretty good results. So after doing those interviews, which were quite lengthy, the group came up with a consensus, the leading candidates are JP Morgan Chase, Gerard, which is a part of Univest and Public Financial Management. I'll try to keep this short. Chase impressed us with their competitiveness, simplicity of recommendations, and ability to communicate with their clients, among other factors. The rates have gone quite high compared to what was happening a year or so ago. Chase proposed a ladder of U.S. Treasuries at a 5.28 percent, and then a fees, not to exceed a 12-month duration. Gerard has a different product, a money market product, with no cost or fees, and same rate of return on those monies. Public Financial Management is similar in how they try their product and their investments, as Gerard is. They have many more products than Gerard does, but those have varying rates depending on how far you go. The consensus, actually, the surprising support that we had from the group was four separately managed accounts. Not to get too deep, but those are a portfolio of securities that you can invest in, similar to an EFT or a mutual fund. I'm not going into AFTs because I don't quite fully understand them myself, but everyone, I think, knows what a fund is, and those investments are in your name as an owner. KeyBank made, so the incumbent, one of the incumbents, KeyBank made a proposal. Unfortunately, their costs were excessive compared with the other competitors, and Wilmington Trust had a great proposal, but their, their fees were higher, significantly higher than the others. To get to the recommendations, we would have the incumbent KeyBank retain the money to help pay our bills and keep our deposits coming in, and also fluctuations in our cash flow, so that, that kind of sets the parameters for them going forward. Gerard, we would basically take the, what is known as compensating balances or excess investments, and put those in the Gerard Money Market Fund. PFM was recommended by, I think, John Thompson, that we retain part of the sewer sale proceeds, one for the feasance of the debt, which has been discussed tonight, and the other for the money for the police station. Those investment vehicles will be determined, because of the number of products the PFM has, those investment will be determined at a staff level sometime soon. And then Chase, which I believe was the most impressive of the group, would manage the sewer sale, the remaining portion of sewer sale proceeds and treasuries over a three, six, nine, and 12-month ladder. I know this is not familiar to a lot of folks, but I'm mostly speaking with the board on this directly because it will be a decision to move forward with whatever route we go. Those are the immediate recommendations, and then, as we got deeper into this, we also realized, in addition to the five banks that we're already dealing with, there was another three that were holding some of our funds as well. So we would recommend that for the Park Improvement Fund, the Transportation Impact Fee Fund, the Developer Escrow Fund, and the Liquid Fuels Fund, we would recommend retaining that with Key, but also renegotiating the rate because their rate is not up to the standard of the other competitors. And then we had some others, like WISFIS and Stiefel and Meridian, and we would recommend that those money are actually general fund monies, and those would get transferred over to. So that summarizes the recommendations of the group that got together and interviewed these banks and heard their proposals, and so I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may.
I think, you know, the briefing that we've had during executive session was helpful to us, so any questions for the public, or any other questions came up, Peter, Rich, from you?
No, I have not.
I have not.
Is out here any, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to authorize the township to engage Gerard Univest, JP Morgan Chase, and PFM in accordance with the recommendations of the investment, I'll call it the Investment Committee.
I'm second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes.
Thank you for your work, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Do we have a public comment?
Even better.
So I'll let Usha get on for the Zoom, talk about the annual fiscal report.
Yes. Thank you, Scott. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So we are going over due diligence to finalize our comprehensive annual financial report, which is due on or before June 40th. So it's 95% of work is done. And I am, I know you, Board and Transit Manager, had discussed the unassigned fund balance. And once that finalized, and I believe it was done today, and then I will incorporate that in our financial report. And then that will be done by June 40th. So there is, anybody have anything specific to ask I can say? But it's like a whole financial together between Finance Department and our editor. And we do very lengthy and serious process to complete that. And it's almost done except for the fund balance.
Just one question. Is this something that really should be finalized with the unassigned balance?
Unassigned balance should be finalized, and then that will go on our cap or comprehensive annual financial report.
Okay. Okay. Right. Any other questions?
No, I'm fine. It was a very comprehensive report.
None, none here.
Thank you.
Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Of course. I'd like to make a motion to accept a comprehensive annual financial report of fiscal year ended December 31st, 2022.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. And any major points to bring up, Usha, regarding the fund balance assignments?
It was in at like the 3.5 million was in access compared to last year. And that's every year it changes year by year, and this year was 3.5 million, which Rich has already, I guess, Rich and Steve had discussed. And it has been assigned. I don't know nothing in particular, unless somebody had portioned. And access was 3.5 million in general fund.
Okay. Rich, make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the fund balance assignments as presented to the Board as concurred previously.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Thanks, Usha.
Thank you.
Steve, if you've got some information on the next item?
Yes, I'm requesting a motion from the Board to approve the Personnel Action Resolution between the Township and the Police Union regarding employee badge number 38. So I simply need the Board to make a motion and vote to approve the MOU, which contains the resolution related to this matter.
I'll make a motion to approve, as read by Stephen Brown. Have a second?
Second. Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. I hear there's a new car salesman in town.
Chris? Actually, we discussed this before, but we're going to ratify the bid, the award for the 2015 Ford F-150, which we sold on municipal bid. It is still in the parking lot, but it was sold for 15,125. We're waiting for the buyer to come and get it. So like I said, the 2015 had 90,000-ish miles on it. It's in good shape, though. We tried. I got some lessons from Rich, you know, a couple of years ago, so.
I have a position for you if you're interested.
Knock it off, Rich. Peter, would you like to?
Are we approving or ratifying or?
Ratifying.
Okay. I will make a motion to ratify the bid to award 2015 Ford F-150 to be sold.
Second?
All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
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 Zach, if you can take us through the world of planning and zoning?
It would be my pleasure. First item here is the discussion we had with the county earlier. So we will proceed as directed to set up a meeting, kind of further that conversation with the county. Second item here, and third item for that matter, are no action required on any development applications at this time. Fourth, Item D, is just an extension of time on the project at 99 Old Valley Road. It was discussed, introduced, I should say, with the Planning Commission meeting, at the Planning Commission meeting last month. They are just offering an extension of time to revise and resubmit the plans and move forward through the process. So that will be the first one that requires any sort of action by the Board.
Pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to extend, for an extension of time for the SDO-1 2023 preliminary final subdivision application at 99 Old Valley Road. Extension until August 31st, 2023.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
I want to try a little experiment with like microphones, if you guys will bear with me. Let's just try one at a time. I think I'm just noticing a little like multiple lights makes sound. So let's just try that. I don't know. We'll see where it goes. Item E here, E1, is a request for financial security release for Linden Hall. This is a Pulte development at the corner of 352 and 30. It's been completed for a few years now, and they are now requesting release of their bond. All of the improvements have been inspected by Arrow, and they are recommending release in the amount of $293,000, $293,986.98.
Do we have any comments from the residents? That was you. You failed. Do we have any, do you have any, you know, as we've had in a few other locations, any comments, any issues that we should be aware of?
We did have a number of conversations months and months ago. We have not heard anything from the community. As I understand it, that transition process has played out. And at this time, it's really just this one remaining item.
I'll make a motion to authorize the final release of financial security for Linden Hall, Pulte, $293,986.98.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item here is similar. It's a request for final release for the Commons at Great Valley. This is the parking lot expansion near the PJ Willehand Shopping Center at the, near the Township line with Charlestown. They are requesting release in the amount of $365,985.36.
Again, any issues that we should be aware of?
Nope. They, we had flagged a few things previously about making sure the grass was established in some of the newly planted areas, but they've rectified that, and Arrow is recommending final release.
I'll make a motion to release for the Commons at Great Valley, Lot 15, the amount of $365,985.36.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is consideration to, for a motion to authorize advertising for two ordinance amendments. The first is a zoning text amendment related to signs within our ROCR district. That's the area that applies primarily to the Uptown Worthington section. And I believe the applicant's attorneys here to kind of present that. Or I can handle it if you'd like, Lou. It's up to you. What would the Board prefer?
Zach can run through this quickly?
Sure. This is just really the way this ordinance is set up is that this district, our zoning ordinance outlines all the different types of signs, the sizes of signs that can be constructed in this district. And essentially, what the applicant, or the property owner, I should say, is requesting is that the Board consider revising the ordinance to reduce the number of, I'll call them site identification signs. These are the overhead, you know, welcome to Uptown Worthington signs in exchange for essentially one additional entrance pylon sign. So the sort of the tenant identification signs near their main entrance points.
The sign is pretty much what they have now, just one less and one more?
Yeah, one less of the overhead welcome signs and more or less a trade-off for one additional tenant identification pylon sign.
These aren't digital either. These are the signs that are there now, correct?
Correct.
Any questions with public?
The only thing I'll add, so I should specify this, the way the ordinance is set up is that the development has to have a master sign plan. So, and that's required to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. So sort of part and parcel to this zoning amendment will have it, that master plan reviewed and approved, which is essentially that other exhibit that was included in your packet, showing where the signs are and the types and all that. So there'll have to be some sort of formal action on that, and we'll move that forward concurrently.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise the zoning text amendment for signs in ROCR District Development.
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second item here is an ordinance amendment related to traffic control signals and devices to exempt, and the word school should be included here, to exempt school buses from certain travel restrictions. This came up in previous meetings as response to public comments from some residents in the area of Flat Road, Sidley, LAP, about buses not being permitted to travel down those roads and, you know, service those neighborhoods. So staff, I'll say, planning staff, admin staff, police, McMahon, Solicitor's Office, all kind of met to talk about what about that request and the potential to exempt buses, school buses specifically, from those time-of-day travel restrictions on certain roads. So it's the corner of Sidley and Flat, corner of LAP and Sidley, and the corner of Flat and 29. At the same time, we identified another neighborhood at the corner of Swedesford and Conestoga. This is the Doe Run, Buck Run, Deer Run neighborhood, has similar travel restrictions. So we're proposing a, an ordinance amendment to the section that controls these signs to add sort of a placard that exempts school buses from those time-of-day restrictions, which would allow them to service those neighborhoods as part of their routing.
Sounds good. Good work on Paul and I together.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment, or to advertise. The ordinance amendment related to traffic control signals and devices to exempt buses from travel restrictions.
Second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I think we've got one, I see one hand raised. I'll just add one little comment here. For the first one there, the zoning text amendment, that'll likely be at the August Board meeting just from procedural timelines perspective. Whereas the second one, the traffic control signals, could be at the July 12th meeting because there's less, I'll say, less advanced notice required. Doesn't require a full 30-day notice like some of the other land use ordinances.
Okay, we do have a question. Gary?
Yeah, hi, Gary McFester, Tenement of Boygore. Regarding those signs that restrict travel in the LAP and Sidley area, my understanding is that the full, when those were enacted, the ordinance on the township website says it's to restrict anyone traveling east on Flat Road. So it's really for travel between Sidley and 29. So technically, anyone whose destination is within the neighborhoods, but before you get to 29, is permitted to travel on those roads. So I think that would allow the school buses to travel through that area. Now, I know the police do often stop people going through there, and when they see their driver's license and their address, you know, they just caution them. They don't really get tickets. But I think on the website, if you look up at the past ordinances, it actually says that it's intended to stop travel to 29.
Isn't it time restricted also? It's based on, that one would be either AM or PM rush. It's clearly not an all-day thing.
Right. It's usually for the morning or the evening rush hours.
Gary, what you're referring to when, if you were to turn onto Flat Road from Sidley, that is specifically barred based on the 7A to 9A, it says you cannot proceed east on Flat Road, period. And unfortunately, the other road, that being LAP, the sign states the same restrictions. You cannot proceed past the do not enter 7AM to 9AM to proceed eastbound on Flat as well. So I think what you're talking about is the LAP Road has a little bit of a twist in it. But ultimately, the Flat Road at Sidley Road is correctly signed to stop anyone from going anywhere on Flat Road between 7:00 and 9:00, Monday through Friday. to stop anyone from going anywhere on Flat Road between seven and nine, Monday through Friday.
No, we won't. All right, Zach, we'll move on to, uh, conditional use.
Yeah, so similarly, just a motion to advertise the, the hearing with respect to conditional use applications. We have sixty days from the date of receipt to schedule, or to open the hearing, I should say. Uh, in this case, uh, similarly to, um, the, uh, we have, I should, let me rephrase that. We have sixty days to open the hearing from the date of receipt and the planning commission reviews it thirty days in advance and it's been transmitted to the planning commission. It'll be discussed at their upcoming meeting on June twenty-eighth. So we would just be asking the board to authorize advertising of the conditional use hearing for the July twelfth meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize advertising the conditional use application for Chester County Intermediate Unit at Forty Moores Road. I sat in on the development committee meeting on this and found that to be a very positive addition to the township.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not familiar with the item that we're discussing. I'm not, uh, familiar with the, uh, item you're talking about, Forty Mills Road. I believe that's Sainte-Cobine. I was wondering if somebody could give a thumbnail sketch of what we're talking about here?
Yeah. I believe it, well, it should be. I'll confirm that it is and I can provide the materials, Mr. Letts, and I can punch up quickly a, uh, site plan. Uh, Forty Moores is the address we assign to the, I'll say, the unit or the area of land to the, immediately to the west of the existing Sangobane office. So I will, I will bring it up here.
Okay, right.
So when that was in previously for the new office building, Forty Moores is the address we assign, thus this, this sort of new street address, just to clarify that. And I will just say, and certainly we can display this here, I would just say that anything, you know, substantive related to the, the application should really be reserved for those, um, discussions with the planning commission and the hearing itself. So I just want to kind of.
This will be at the planning commission this month?
Correct. June twenty-eighth is the date of the meeting.
Well, isn't a school allowed within the professional office now? So I'm concerned or interesting why we're going with conditional use route? Is any school allowed within professional office now?
It must be by conditional use. Honestly, I don't have the ordinance memorized, but.
Is that the reason?
Yeah, there's a sort of a, I don't want to say a generic, but there's a section of the permitted use tables that refers to educational cultural uses by conditional use approval, yes.
Uh, the other question I would have is the notification process. Uh, what are your thoughts now in terms of notifying the surrounding?
We would follow whatever is in the ordinance. Off the top of my head, I'd have to look at exactly how that relates. This is a little, I don't want to say unique in that it, it doesn't apply as cleanly to the ordinance, but as you know, this is sort of a condo unit within a larger tract. So we would just have to look at how that applies to the surrounding property owners, like, you know, who all would get noticed, that is.
I would suggest that everyone decide or.
Sure. Yeah, that's generally our approach, for sure.
Good, thank you.
We've got two quick items under seven A. Um, I'd like to just knock out and then we'll move on to the, um, GMH presentation following. So John, if you can jump in here and just knock this out quickly?
The next hearing of the zoning hearing board will be on June twenty-sixth. At that hearing, the first application they'll be hearing is of Covenant United Presbyterian Church and their People's Pantry at Church Road. They are proposing to erect, uh, two additions, two small additions to the property, which will encroach into two setback requirements. Um, the affected areas are, uh, either unpopulated areas to the railroad tracks and to the, uh, west and east of the property, uh, which is property owned by them. Uh, they actually have some members that are here this evening in case any questions arise from the application. Um, the additions are being made to the property for, uh, purposes of food storage and patron access to the front where they're going to improve the vestibule for, uh, access for, uh, the patrons. And, uh, very simple, uh, minor application that they're, uh, that they're proposing.
And for everyone out there, we're talking about the facility that is popularly known as People's Pantry. I don't see any problems with, uh, going forward and I don't need to send a solicitor to this unless you see something?
Totally fine.
Looks, looks great.
The second application that'll be heard will be of, uh, the Great Valley Owners Association, um, and Bright Realty as to the replacing some signage that they have on their property. As you can all recall, they used to have the, uh, large corporate cubes that were at the main entrances to the property. Um, they want to replace them with a new modern design of signage that they have, uh, they have designed to delineate their entrances and their, uh, their product they have available there. Um, again, they have a representative of the association here, um, and we have some, uh, photographs avail, or some illustrations available if needed to be seen.
Please. Is, is the representative here?
Here as well with me. It's essentially as was just described, the big old, the old cubes have been taken down, dismantled and they'd like to replace them. Of what you have, the renderings that were submitted with your package, it requires, uh, some sign, uh, size variance, from the existing OBP ordinance. It's not that far off in the signage that's already permitted, the size of the signage in the ordinance. There's various ways to measure it. I won't bore you with all the details, but there's essentially three of them, three signs that are be affected here. And it largely has to do with the rebranding of the corporate center.
It's going to be those colors, right? Okay, alright.
We're going to be placing them at areas that are really the entrances to the park from either the Turnpike, Route thirty or so we're trying to minimize the impact of the actual signs, but make sure that they are visible. They really are representing seven hundred and fifty acres of development.
They'll be visible.
Be surprised.
Yeah, I, I sat through the planning commission with, or the subcommittee with this. I think it's a great old signage on it there, so. I think the zoning hearing board can handle it again. So I think we're good. Alright, thanks.
Thank you very much for your time.
There is a question. Carol Rapp, go ahead, please.
Uh, so I have a question, um, about those signs, because I am not a fan of illuminated signs. Um, so when you say it's internally illuminated, what is, or indirectly, what does that mean? Or no, you do say internally illuminated, what does that mean?
It means light inside the sign. Right now, the ordinance permits the signs to be lit from, from a ground. It's, it's really an older ordinance. If you had a spotlight on the ground, uh, you could uplight the signs. Um, that method of sign lighting has probably gone out of style twenty or twenty-five years ago. So these are just internal to the sign itself, light within the sign.
So like, how, how bright and distracting are they going to be? Like, that's something that I really think takes away when you have signs that are like glaring.
You're talking to the wrong person when you're asking exactly what the illumines of the sign will be, but I would imagine that the township, when we go before the zoning hearing board, they will attach, if they approve this variance, we will be prepared to have that answer and they will attach whatever condition or whatever, um, um, sign limitation, lighting limitation they believe is appropriate for the sign. I know generally, the township's lighting ordinance doesn't allow glare to extend beyond the property line, but I don't know how that plays in the instance of identification signs. But that's a good question that we will be prepared to answer when we go to the zoning board.
Okay, thank you.
Not to overstep, but I think it's also going to be fairly consistent with some of the other signs that are already out there. Um, within the park, The Grove and some others are already internally illuminated and it's going to essentially be the same effect as what, what you've already seen within the general area.
Right, but the more you add, the more illuminated the entire area becomes, which I find distracting, you know, because we have neighborhoods too.
Yeah, and I think part of what we're trying to do is reduce the amount of, uh, of lighting right by taking it from the seven signs down to the three and making them more local. So again, we're, we're trying to reduce the impact, but make sure that, um, people are, you know, understanding when they are entering into the corporate center.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, John, I don't see any issues at this point in time. So we'll come back to you on, on the property management and we'll proceed with, um, the GMH community develop, development proposal. As everyone's coming forward, I, I, I just want to comment that when we have, when the township receives, uh, development proposals or proposals for different projects, it gets vended initially by the staff. And, um, there is a planning subcommittee that occurs, um, once a month and those plans are looked at, they're reviewed by the police, the fire, DPW, by planning to make sure they meet code requirements and just to give feedback as far as what the project is. Um, there is oftentimes one liaison from the board who is present at those. And there's a discussion pertaining to the project. It's good, what's bad, that, that's terrible, that's too big, that's whatever. Anyway, it's a process that we are bringing out here for transparency for the public to see it and have it discussed, um, in public so that you can see it firsthand, so you can make comments, so we can hear your comments. And so this is what this particular, um, exercise is doing at this point in time for GMH to talk about the proposal and sort of like a, what they call a sketch plan, I guess. Um, did I kind of cover anything you would want to add?
No, I think that's a, that's a good, you know, set the table, as they say, right? We, the applicant has met with staff and the subcommittee. Uh, they've recently submitted a petition to have the property rezoned to our multifamily Route thirty overlay district, which allows multifamily developments, apartments. Um, and then like Scott said, the purpose tonight is really just to kind of have a conversation, allow the applicant, uh, you know, an opportunity to present their proposal, get feedback, answer questions both from the board and from the public and just sort of have a conversation about the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vin Donahue from, uh, Lammernak, Macerlane, representing GMH Communities.
Uh, thanks, Zach. Um, as Zach said, I'm Vin Donahue from Lammernak, I'm here on behalf of GMH Communities tonight. Uh, we're here in connection with the proposed project submitted by two fifty-five Lancaster Project Owner LLC. Uh, that's a single-purpose LLC controlled by GMH Communities. This is the same team that built and continues to own, uh, the yards in the township. The property is located at two forty-nine, two fifty-five Lancaster Avenue. Uh, also here with us today from the GMH team is Sean Gallagher and Kevin Layden. Uh, we have our project engineer, Joe Riscella, here with, tonight from, uh, Hal. And, uh, from Barton Partners, uh, the project architect, Taran Nolan, is with us tonight. Uh, this property comprises two tax parcels, forty-two dash four ninety-eight and forty-two dash four dash ninety-eight point four and comprises approximately five point three five acres in total. Uh, the property is currently owned by MGD LLC, which acquired the property in October two thousand and nineteen from the King family, which had owned it, from my understanding, for a very long period of time. I think you're familiar with the recent history of this property. Some of the recent efforts to develop the property have failed. Uh, nonetheless, MGD intends to sell this property to a buyer that intends to develop it. The idea is not to find a buyer who's going to maintain the status quo for the property, which currently contains a, uh, self-service car wash as well as a laundromat and a, and a big volume of vacant land behind it. Uh, GMH currently has the property under agreement with MGD and GMH is proposing the development of a multifamily community that you'll hear more about in a minute. Uh, as Zach alluded to, uh, we have submitted a petition to amend the zoning map and the zoning ordinance to include these two tax parcels within the MF thirty overlay district. Uh, we've been engaged in informal discussions with staff, with Zach, and, uh, at one point, uh, made a presentation and met with the planning and zoning subcommittee, uh, at which we got some valuable feedback. Uh, we believe that this proposed use at this site is entirely consistent with the township's vision for the corridor as it's described in the two thousand and eighteen Route thirty corridor master plan, which as you all know is an offshoot of the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan. We appreciate the opportunity to appear tonight to have a general discussion about the proposed project and discuss the pending draft amendment to the overlay district and then we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you or the residents have. Uh, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Gallagher from GMH, who's going to walk us through some history of GMH and, uh, some more particular facts about the project under consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board, for your time this evening in the township. Uh, Zach, could you pull up the GMH presentation and, uh, we'll start on page six. Uh, again, this is a lengthy presentation. Uh, the GMH history will cruise through pretty quickly as well as the history of the yards. I know your time's valuable tonight. So, uh, GMH, again, developer of the yards. Uh, we've been in business since nineteen eighty-five, pushing forty years, uh, all aspects of real estate since its inception, but most focused on residential throughout the history of the company. The founder of the company and the current CEO are residents of Malvern. We do have a national presence, but we're a locally-based company. Our headquarters is in Newtown Square. Fifteen, Zach? Uh, this is just a snippet of the yards, which everyone is, is familiar with down the street. We finished the project in September of two thousand and twenty-one. It is two hundred and twenty-five units and we still actively own and manage today and it's, uh, fully occupied at, at ninety-five percent. Excellent. This just gives a brief history, uh, remembering, uh, and new history for those that are here, but through two thousand and sixteen and, and through two thousand and eighteen, we worked with East Whiteland Township, the Route thirty corridor master plan and the eventual MF multifamily overlay district, uh, which rezoned, I think, approximately forty-seven parcels at that intersection of Plainbrook Road and Route thirty to allow for our development to take place. After the zoning was enacted, uh, we spent a little, oh- After the zoning was enacted, we spent a little, little less, yeah, about six months working with the township on conditional use and then a better part of a year working on the land development. Conditional use allowed the township to, you know, work together with us on the facade, parking, other items before we got into the land development and design. Construction, we had a pretty successful construction, given it was started right at the start of COVID. Pennsylvania was one of the few states in our country that residential construction was shut down. We were able to overcome that and have the best lease-up we've ever had in our company. We leased up in, in less than 12 months. And so, but yeah, we can go to page 19. Maybe one back? All right, Vin did touch on this, the history of the property. Again, many of you are familiar with it. It was a self-service car wash. Pre-2015, the King family owned it for decades. I actually utilized that car wash years ago and the laundromat, too. Those have now been closed for quite some time and shuttered. And then the property in the rear, Lidl, during our process with the yards, Lidl was actively pursuing and I think did, if not got final approval, but was close to it. And as a company mandate, pulled a lot of their developments throughout the United States, one being this one here in East Whiteland. And as Vin noted earlier, the, in 2019, the current owner purchased the property from the King family and were engaged with another developer, Westrum, who had it under control for a couple of years. And that, that did not go through. So that's where GMH came into play today. And I'm gonna hand it off to Tara from Barton to walk you through the site plan and some of the architectural elevations.
So the unit, it's a four stories of residential over press podium, 240 units.
Tara, I'm getting, wait, you gotta talk into Mike.
240 units, 6% studios, 70% one beds and 24% two beds. The gross square footage is 339,000, 339,254,000 and the net is 203,775,000. And we have 138 parking spaces in a garage and 161 surface for a total of 299. The design and placement of the building came basically off of the existing site conditions. So if you start at the southwest corner of the building and work your way back to the northeast corner, which is planned north, the grade drops approximately 10 to 15 feet. So in order to hold our four stories of residential, we have a depressed parking podium at the back of that northeast corner of the building, where we'll have the parking underneath, but still be able to maintain our four stories of construction, residential construction above. We will have two amenity courtyards. In the front, off of the main entry, there is a pool and a much more active courtyard. There'll be the residential entry as well as the entry spaces. And then over the podium, in the center of the building, will be a more passive bi courtyard. So this shot is from Linden Maple Ave looking at the entries, parking. So on the right would be the amenity entry and then this back into the courtyard is the residential entry. Courtyard.
Tara, if you wouldn't mind pulling the microphone closer.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the top shot is looking from Maple Linden Lane up towards Route 30. So it's sort of the back of the building and that's where it will drop down to that low-level parking podium. And then the bottom right is taken from the corner of the intersection of Maple Linden and Route 30. The materials that we're looking at are stone, fiber cement, horizontal siding. And of course, these are very early preliminaries, so we're open to any suggestions from the township as far as the aesthetics of the building.
Next slide, Zach, jump back in. One more. All right, so this, this would show, this is a traffic improvement plan, just as we did at the yards, 1.7 miles to the west. We would incorporate what's called out in the Route 30 Master Plan. We would be installing a, another travel lane, a bike lane, a sidewalk and I'll call it a landscape buffer area, landscaping, benches, lighting, et cetera. But if you've seen what we've done at the yards, it would be similar here. So continuing that theme of traffic improvements on the Route 30 corridor with our property furniture. 26. As, as we did with the yards project, and I believe it's a requirement of land development, we did a fiscal impact analysis of what our proposed unit mix is and our project building type. And we are showing $124,000 surplus in taxes to the East Whiteland Township and then a $356,000 surplus to the Great Valley School District. That is taking into account the school age impact our project would have, which is detailed on the next page. So this is a current, or the school, last day of school was today in the Great Valley School District. So this past year, 2022, 2023, this shows the like projects as what we're proposing at 249 Lancaster and takes into account what we have at the, at the yards at Malvern, the school age children that are attending the Great Valley School District, the public school system in those communities. I point out here, the yards at Malvern, we currently have, this past school year, 14 school age students. When we did our fiscal impact study in 2018, we projected 13. So we were one off, there's one more currently. What will it be next year? I don't know, but what I think that shows is the fiscal impact analysis is pretty accurate in terms of what the impact is gonna be at the school districts. Now, if you looked at just in East Whiteland Township, if you put William Henry Apartments, that's still the name, or Westgate Village, they would probably have a higher level of ratio of students because they're more spread out, walk-up style, they're not elevators. Any elevator-served building with a parking garage is gonna defray from kids above the age of five. They're just not interested in going to be there. So that's just important to point out. I think our, Zach, if you scroll down a little bit, our current projection is 14 students. We've done a full fiscal impact analysis, we've submitted to the township, but just thought this were, these were the important data points. 29. Is, as Mr. Lambert had stated and Scott stated, we presented before the Planning and Zoning Subcommittee meeting in mid-March. And one of the items that was brought up, which, you know, we hear in other areas of the country is, is there demand for multifamily still? Is there demand? We have to ask ourselves that question in conventional apartments, student housing, where we're developing, is, can we lease these projects? Otherwise, we wouldn't build them. The Dantor Company is a nationally-recognized, so a real estate, real estate research firm. They typically are doing student housing research for us, some conventional apartments. But this slide here just shows a snippet of what the proposed, what the renter demographic would look like in our proposed project. They studied this area, just to, I don't have a map, everyone's presentation, but they studied the area basically from, on the eastern boundary, the Blue Route, western boundary, Route 100, 202, to Westchester Exton, southern boundary, Route 3 in Newtown Square, and the northern boundary about where East Whiteland meets Charlestown Township. So small geographic area where that is considered the market that they're studying. If you scroll down just a little bit, Zach, the yards at Malvern demographics.
This is part of the study that was submitted to the township.
It is, yes, yeah. It's, Mr. Wurlow, it's been fully submitted, it's a large one, but it's, it, it comes to a good, a conclusion that we needed to see and hopefully the, you know, the township would appreciate reviewing. But yards at Malvern demographics, you can see on the screen, I'll read it out. What's this slide mean? We think that the yards at Malvern and our proposed project is a benefit to the community. That's, that's what that shows. Next slide. Thanks, Zach. This just shows, again, in that comparable set, on the far right side, we look at a comparability rating. What does that mean? Our subject site is a 33. The only one that is, is higher is the Smith. That's a newer project that's located in the King of Prussia Community Center. What's the comparability rating taking place? Takes a location, closeness of schools, the ability for shopping, walkability, transportation, typical, I'll say, standard type of items that would say, yes, this is a nice site and it has a good curb appeal. So, and there's some very nice, very nice projects in that, in that competitive analysis set. One more slide. All right, so apartment vacancy rate, that's, I think, a concern, not only in East Whiteland, but other areas is, are people gonna start moving out of these? Are they gonna be overbuilt, oversaturated? Vacancy rate's gonna go up, they're not gonna be maintained as well. In that competitive market set, that geography talked about, is overall, it breaks it down into unit types, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, 3.2%. And that also takes into account two projects that are in lease-up. So it would be lower, but again, that, that's reports that there's still demand for these, for these buildings to be occupied. One more slide, Zach? Thank you. In conclusion, again, it's in the report. It does support the 240-unit proposal that you're seeing today. The report did take into account the proposed development at the Clu's site. And importantly to point out is the second paragraph here that would show this property being absorbed and fully leased in a year. That would be about the same amount of time it took us to lease up the yard. So it's showing that 19 to 21 units would be rented a month to give it, you know, the national average is 12 to 14. And it kinda points, it points to that there's still strong demand here, specifically in East Whiteland Township and the surrounding area for multifamily. 34, please. These are just additional benefits to the township, being this a residential opposed to a commercial project. There is a residential, a recreation fee in lieu of. That is just a per-unit calculation at 240 units. The township would receive a $706,000 check that would be, would have to be provided to the township before plan recording. It was, it was less at the yards, I think it was pushing 600. The rate's gone up a little bit and we had less units, but that's not tied to anything we're doing. That's, that's, that's fully discretionary money for the township. We showed the Maple Linden potential lane dedication, Maple Linden Lane. We've done the research, that is, I forget when that was developed, but there is a standing offer of dedication to the township for that road. And we look at that as a potential, we haven't met with the HOA yet in the rear, but if there is an interest for the township to take dedication, the HOA to take that off of their, their books for maintenance, I think there's concerns. I don't know if this is a fact or not, but I've heard that the school buses can't go down. But that would be something that we would, you know, be willing to, to, to work with the township and the HOA on. Route 30 improvements, you saw if, outside of our property, if, you know, there was willingness of the owners, the neighboring properties, to allow those improvements to be done, you know, we would, we would work with them. We know that is a, a very top priority to the township, the Route 30 improvements in that whole quarter. Transportation impact fee, that's a standard fee, residential or not, I believe. Maybe one more, Zach, is there one more down? Trail connection, so this, this was, this was brought up at the Planning and Zoning Subcommittee. I didn't know that the township was, was looking to extend the Chester Valley Trail, you know, through Maple Linden Lane, other areas to 30. And we would be offering to assist with that. What does that mean right now? I don't know, but I can use an example of what we did working with the township at the yards. Yeah, probably forgotten about by now, but there was, at that time, a really push on this potential for a train station on the Immaculata property. We have offered, it's recorded on our property. If that ever goes through or the township does the Plainbrook Road extension, they have the right to take that, I don't know, whatever is the first 50, 75 feet of our property and do that Plainbrook Road extension. Another local project, we're just finishing up in Edgemont Township. We worked with Edgemont Township. And the neighboring township, Upper Providence, we had nothing to do with Upper Providence, but if any of you have driven through Providence Road between Westchester Pike, along the Ridley Creek State Park, so between Westchester Pike and 252, there's three new traffic lights. It's, those traffic lights should have been installed maybe before I was born, but we took that on. It was more than was to bear for a 249-unit apartment building there we're developing, but that's just examples of what we do. What, what we do there, we would try and help any way we can. And I think it's off to page 39, Zach. I'm gonna hand it back to Vin, but thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. So we're here to discuss a zoning ordinance and map amendment. What we wanted to show with this slide here is what you're looking at. That's a graphic taken from the 30 corridor plan that recommended MF 30-style overlay development in two areas in the township along 30. There was the mixed-use center east area and there was another one in the western area where the, where the yards is. And we just wanna point out that the parcels we're looking at developing here are not in the MUC east area, but they're immediately contiguous to the western border of it. And obviously, just inside the MUC east area, you have Lincoln Court Shopping Center. You go to that next slide, Zach, please? Actually, maybe the one before that. Two before that? We're getting there. Just because we thought this might be helpful in the Board's consideration of this. We had Hal, Joe Riscella, develop two alternative development plans here for uses permitted in the FC, which is where the properties are, how the properties are currently zoned. The first is a self-storage facility, which would result in the elimination of the two buildings on the property right now, the laundromat and the car wash, for your consideration. And the next one, Zach, is a car dealership with the existing buildings remaining. These are uses permitted in the FC and thought it would be useful to see what other kinds of projects might be developed on this property. Mind you, that would not be GMH doing this. But if, if GMH is able to get the zoning for this property, we'd be pursuing our project. If you go to the slide after the, that MUC east area slide, Zach? We apologize, some of these ordinance slides are a little tough to read. But what we did was, fully aware of the ordinance that is under consideration for the Bentley application and which I think this Board authorized advertisement of for a hearing, we've submitted a, attached to our ordinance, attached to our position to amend. The ordinance, as it would amend the Bentley petition. So the only changes that we'd be seeking to what the Board authorized advertisement for, for the Bentley petition, include, obviously, the addition of these two parcels to the list within the MF 30 overlay district, a height, a maximum height of 55 feet and a tweak to the step-back provision. It says that the third and fourth stories will be stepped back when the facade is within the 50-foot, within 50 feet of the public right-of-way. Other than that, the ordinance we've, we've submitted for consideration is identical to the one that you have all vetted for a hearing, I think, next month. So getting to what we're looking for. Ideally, we would like this Board to consider including these parcels in connection with the ordinance being considered in connection. the ordinance being considered in connection with the Bentley petition. We think that would be an economical and efficient way for the township to handle it. I think that any differences between what we're requesting and what this board has already vetted could be easily and quickly reconciled. So from that standpoint, that's what we're asking for. If the board's not inclined to do that, we would just follow the normal course with our petition. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions that the board may have or that Zach may have, or any questions that the public may have.
I have a couple. What's the lowest projected rent that you have for this project? That'd be one bedroom, obviously.
$1,725 for a studio.
That's a studio. And the highest projected rent?
$2,900 in the two bedrooms.
What's the basis for the parking ratio of, I think it's 1.24?
About that, and it's what the current ordinance requires, one per bed. And that's, we can't go any lower than that in our, you know, that was discussed, Mr. Orlo, at the planning and zoning, if there was the ability to go lower. And that's, in our communities, we see one per bed is sufficient, but any lower than that, you know, there's a lack of in suburban markets.
What's the invert elevation of the building height compared to the road bed height? How much higher over the road bed is the building height? You may not know that, I know. I know, you may not know that, but somebody does. Bet you didn't know I thought what invert elevation was.
I thought you were going to talk about sewer or stormwater with that one. I can tell you at the, Zach, if you went back to the elevation, one more slide down. Yeah, so that, those highest points, Mr. Orlo, are about 46 feet. But that's from existing grade there. Route 30 is higher than all parts of the site. So could you say 40 roughly? Somewhere between 35 and 40 to be safe from Route 30.
On one of the slides, it says at that front rectangle, along Route 30 is amenity, but in the, one of the photos, sketches, it looks like they're units. Are they units or amenity?
Amenity of the ground floor.
Just the, oh, it's the, that's the ground floor. Got it, okay. Yes, it says it.
Go to the.
Okay, yeah, it does look like units, yeah, okay. What kind of amenities would be part of this one?
It would be similar to the yards. The internal amenities, we're seeing that the, you know, with, we hope, I think, I live locally in the Great Valley School District. We all want to see the employees back at the Great Valley Corporate Center, but even with that said, the, these kind of work-from-home setup areas that were conference rooms, we're creating small, almost, I would say, cube-like attractive areas for people to get out of their unit and work for even a few hours and be able to stay in the building, but similar to the yards, very similar.
You provided a fiscal impact study to the township?
Yes.
Has a traffic study been done also and not yet?
A traffic study has not been done. We would anticipate doing the Route 30 improvements and also a traffic signal. I believe Lidl had a traffic signal. We would want a traffic signal. I think a lot of the residents in the rear, from what I hear, I know that area in rush hour, especially in the afternoon, is very challenging to head east, heading out of Maple Linden. We would expect the improvements shown on that plan, the Route 30 improvements and a traffic signal.
In any of your other projects where they're locally or out of the area, have any what is considered affordable housing units? Not necessarily government subsidized, but affordable in a common sense way?
We do. I can answer that, your first question. In the city of Phoenix, Arizona, we have two high-rises. We're coming out of the ground now, two levels of underground parking, and one student tower, one conventional tower. In the conventional tower, 7% of the units are at the, I've drawn a blank on the name of the county, but at the county median income level. And the way typically, we don't do the straight subsidized housing, but the way that is subsidized is the city of Phoenix owns the land. We have a 99-year lease with the city of Phoenix to lease this two and a half acres. It's a great rate for the first 20 years. It goes up incrementally, but that was part of the deal with the city of Phoenix in our development agreement. That's 7% of the units.
Sure.
Yeah, and for a period of time. I can't remember, but.
However long they say since they own the land.
That's correct.
Pretty much.
One thing I wanted to point out, I know affordability sounds scary when you say $1,725 a month. We all see how expensive things are. The one thing that is different is we flip-flop the percentage of one bedrooms versus two bedrooms at 249 compared to the yards. We had 40% of the yards was studios and one bedrooms. They were the first to go. They flew. I mean, it was, the studios went first, they were about 10% of the unit mix, and the one bedrooms, and then the two bedrooms. We've done 60% studios and one bedrooms at, so cheaper rents.
At the yards, you've rolled over rents, I guess, three years now?
We first took occupants October 1st, 2021, and the standard lease in the apartment world is 12 months. So we're coming up on the second round of renewals. The first round of renewals were all increases in rent, and even through the lease-up, there were increases in the rent.
What average or range of percentage were they increased?
They were.
If you know.
I want to say it was between 3% and 7%. We use a daily pricing, and you've heard others probably talk about it. It's a similar system that was adopted by the airline network that, you know, if our two-bedroom units are becoming more vacant, those rents go down. If the two bedrooms are fully occupied, their rents go up. So this system is controlled to, I mean, we have oversight over it. It's not, they're not artificial intelligence, as they're running away, but, you know, we would, these rents that we show today are today's rents, and we hold that for whatever it would be, years from now, that it would start to be occupied.
Yeah, that's.
Sorry to be repetitive, because I'm, with the planning subcommittee, a lot of these questions I ask, but some of them you addressed about the connection to the trail, to the The road connection on Maple Linden, I'm hearing there's, I don't know, mixed things about whether or not they're going to be working with you on that or not?
Mr. Lambert, I had a conversation with the management firm that represents the association, and their big issue was traffic signalization. But we have, there's an existing easement benefiting both of the parcels that we have under agreement for access to each of them from Maple Linden Lane.
Is there an option if that doesn't happen with that access to Maple Linden?
If it doesn't happen?
Right.
We haven't modeled it that way, Sean. You can answer that one, but like I said, there is an existing recorded right going back to the days when the association was organized that granted the easement.
Okay. The other question early on was the parking in the front versus putting 100% parking in the back away from the road?
We looked at that, and the way the site, the way the site laid out, it was challenging to do what we would plan to do, and the board would have the, you know, the full say over it is during that conditional use process. I believe the way the ordinance is written now is to provide that fencing and landscape buffer. Because this sits, you know, such lower, that the site works where that first level of parking up against 30 is going to be six-plus feet lower than 30 with a fence line and landscape buffer, I don't, I think, I don't think you'd see the parking. If it was higher or at, it would be there, but we looked at it, and with the Route 30 improvements and the required right-of-way we have to dedicate, it kind of just pinched us from the footprint of the building.
I don't see how you can connect to the trail. Yeah, just like, you got to go back through, two parcels behind, Joseph's Way are owned by Fraser Menonite Church. Those are two empty parcels. Maybe they could use some money for the, this program that the county was talking about, their nonprofit, in theory.
We figured they'd run underneath the Pico power lines.
Boy, good luck. Through Swedesford Road, through backyards. A lot of backyards.
Yeah, just to a point on the.
That's a real valley.
Trail?
Yeah. It's nice to say we could try, but there is just.
To the point on the trail, we. To the point on the trail, what the Route 30 corridor and some of the other plans have called for is just trying to find a way to Route 30 from the Chester Valley Trail. This was thrown out as really just a concept, one way to kind of get across Pico to Route 30. We realized that Pico has increasingly restrictive standards for facilities within, beneath, along, across their facilities. So this is kind of, I'll say pie in the sky, would definitely require a lot more planning and feasibility, but something that was just discussed as a way to try to, you know, make more connectivity in this area, that's all. Very preliminary.
So there are questions. Bill and Barb, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Barb Arnold, 31 Fonstock Road. Thank you, board, for asking the insightful questions. I appreciate that. Some of the, a couple of points I was going to mention got talked about a little bit, but just in that location, right next to the Lincoln Court Plaza there, that's where 30 goes down, I believe, to the two lanes. So you'd better hope we can get to the Route 30 corridor thing done, because that's going to be really problematic if you've got apartments and people coming in and out with those lanes narrowing and everything. That, just, you know, just pointing out that's going to be tough, and a traffic light, I would think, would be necessary, as you had mentioned. You said something about you installing a traffic light, and I just wondered if you could clarify what you meant by that?
It is, if you've driven by the yards at Malvern or Development to the west, you would see a future lane there that's carved into our site, that's waiting for the properties to the west and the east and the remainder of the corridor to be completed. This happened, let's see, this happened locally, not far from here in Delaware County, Concord Township, there was a stretch of road at 322, 202 and Route 1, to 322 and Route 1. That was a four-lane highway for years, and probably from about 2003 through 2015, maybe 10 years, that was fully widened. 10 years ago, that, 15 years ago, that road looked different. That would be the intention here, but that road specifically, to answer your question, is for the future lanes to meet it to the east and to the west.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just a quick point to that. We, one thing that, again, this is all very preliminary, this is just a presentation informal to the board and to the public, but being, you know, sort of to that point, this is the area where the, what we call the bottleneck sort of initiates. This is an opportunity, potentially, to kind of bridge that gap, at least to what ultimately could, potentially, if the board and others are supportive. If you can bridge the gap from Maple, from Lincoln Court to Maple Linden, an opportunity there to kind of create, I'll say, a more comprehensive traffic improvement, let's say, to get you at least from where it's the bottleneck now to a signalized intersection. So just one thing to consider, just from like a planning standpoint and some of the other activities the township is exploring with, from a traffic planning standpoint.
Okay, Count Grab, go ahead, please.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, can we go back, Zach, to the slide? I believe there was a slide where they were looking at what the income would be. People, I remember seeing something for a single would be $141,000, so there was some slide where they were indicating income, which is concerning to me. We don't need more high-income apartments. We need housing that people can afford. So I believe there was a slide early on in the first, I don't know, but there was one where you guys were showing the income. Do you guys know what I'm talking about?
It's back up on the screen now, if you could see.
I can.
Are you, okay.
Okay. So, so, yeah, so, well, there was one where, okay, so this isn't the one, there was one where I saw at the bottom, this is what you're projecting for this site? There we go, that's what I'm looking at. Average individual income, 141. How many people do you think in our township make that?
This is, this is, these are actual stats from our project, the yards in Malvern.
Okay, so, so a higher income development, and this to me looks like the mirror image of the yards, is it not?
It's, yes.
Like in design and, huh?
It is similar, that's correct.
Yeah, so we're going to have two almost identical developments, not too far apart from each other. And then, so this is concerning to me, because what we need is housing that people can afford. People cannot afford this and then have rents go up in a year, you know, 3% to 7% or more. I'm very concerned about all this building, all these apartments, how busy Route 30 has was already raised. It's two lanes, from the shopping center all the way down, all the way down to like Home Depot, I think. So that is very concerning, because, you know, the Clues and Strawbridge, they want to put apartments there too. I just don't see how we can handle all this volume, and it concerns me. I didn't like the idea of a traffic light when Lidl was looking at this, because then you have a traffic light, all, you know, constant, where it'll be like trying to get through Paoli, where it can take you 10 minutes just to get through Paoli. I just am really, really concerned, and I know the money is enticing, that you see what they tell you the township's going to get, but man, we got to really look at, what is this doing to the impact of the people who live here? Or all the people that can't afford those places, you know? I don't know. I just, I'm very concerned about the volume of development that is like suddenly exploding in that section of Route 30 and greater. So that's all I wanted to say.
And this is Peter speaking. If I may kind of jump on the coattails of what Carol's saying, this is a very nice plan to develop her, but I just don't see that plan being used now. I think it's putting the cart before the horse as far as the redevelopment of Route 30. I'd like to see what comes after the expansion of Route 30, and would have to agree that to put more density and more traffic in before the lanes are expanded, I think, is too soon. is too soon. So I would not be in agreement with going forward with this project at this time.
Debbie Mobile?
Hi, Deb Mobile, 42 Village Way. I have a list, I'm sorry. First of all, that, to go back on what Carol said, that may be the median income of what's at the flats right now, but that's because that's who can afford the flats. 144,000 is not the average income of the school teachers in this township. It's not the average income of the police officers in this township. It's not the average income of most of the people who work at that township building. So, you know, it's only, it's only an average income for who's actually renting it, which which is kind of, you know, it's skewing your data. I'm concerned about wanting to hook it with the Blakely project. Which one is the Blakely proposal? I I'm sorry, I can't keep all these names straight. There's so many requests. The gentleman said he wanted to hook this proposal with the Blakely proposal because it was the same thing.
Ma'am, the name, the name is Bentley?
Bentley, I'm sorry. Okay. The Bentley, I'm scribbling down as I'm saying. And which proposal is that?
Mr. Bentley has submitted a petition similar to the one we submitted in May to amend the ordinance to end the map, to rezone the Clues and Strawbridge property.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought, but I, again, I didn't want to be incorrect. Okay, we're talking about two totally different properties. I actually wasn't sure if losing, if that property would come up again, and I drove by that again today. And I can't, for the love of me, figure out how they're going to perch those apartments up on that hill. Once again, there's gonna be a, there's going to be dozens of variances for, you know, cutting into the steep slope. And a couple of, you know, it was actually, it was some, some of the same supervisors and some different supervisors, but this township fought hard to get those steep slopes ordinances into effect, and now everybody wants an exception. Everybody asks for a variance. If you know what you're getting when you're getting a property, you know, when you buy it, that that's what you get. So, you know, before any are even considered, I would want to know what exceptions, you know, you're going to ask for. You've asked for a couple of things about the front of the building, is that absolutely it? And what are you going to be cutting into? And what are going to be the environmental impacts of that? As well as the transportation impacts, et cetera. And the third thing, and I am, I am trying to say this in all plightness, but as a citizen of this township, I do not appreciate planners coming to my town and showing me what we're gonna put there if you don't agree with us. And by putting up slides for what else could be developed, well, you know what else could be developed? Open space, put a big park there. Okay, but you're gonna put the least negative, and you're not the first planner developer who's done this to this township. You know, we had one recent one threaten to put in Amazon warehouses on a property. Well, if this is what, if you don't want to agree with me, we're gonna put in Amazon warehouses. You know, if you want to be a member of this community, then you should be working with this community. And when you put up stuff like that, to me, it rings a blackmail. You know, not everyone on the board may agree with me, but that's the way I took it when you put it up there. So, thank you for listening.
You're welcome, ma'am. Ma'am, if if I could address your last issue first, we showed those alternative plans just an example of what is currently permitted under the existing zoning. If if this project is not going to be multifamily, which is what GMH does, then we're not threatening any other use by anyone else. It would not be us. Sometimes, in my experience, we found it, we found that boards and planning commissions find it helpful to understand what else is permitted there and what that might look like. We showed two alternative plans that we had our our engineers at Hal put together, but we we would never be developing those plans.
Excuse me, but you spent the money to have them draw it up so you could show us what terrible thing would happen to us if we didn't agree with you. I mean, this, I beg to differ, okay? And and I'm not gonna take up, I'm sure there are other people with questions and comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a question in the back.
Hi, I'm Mary Decker. I live at 27 Mill Lane, as well as the coordinator at the People's Pantry. My concern, I have two. First off, the garden at the Fraser Mennonite Church. They're very worried, I don't know if anybody's here from the Fraser Mennonite Church, but we've had a conversation on our, at our last board meeting with the pastor at the church, who's very concerned with the high-rise building blocking sun for the garden that's back there. This garden feeds a lot of people. They have space to move it. If they have to move it, that garden will not be, nobody will be getting anything from the garden for a couple of years because they'll have to be started from scratch. So that's a big concern. Personally, I'd rather see a car dealership there because they're not going to be blocking the sun from the garden. Secondly, I grew up across the street from there, knew the King family forever. I lived at 232 Lincoln Highway, which is the carpet place right now upstairs. And I know there was a lot of dry cleaning chemicals at that building. So had they been cleaned up? Has the EPA done their job?
I can, I can answer the first question. We would, we would work with the the church for anything that was needed. The easiest one first would be a shadow study to see if if the, if the sun would be blocked, and we would work if any sort of garden need to be moved with them. That would be first. Second, yes, there is a, there's an Act Two approval from DEP that was, that was done during the Lidl process that would allow the the Lidl be developed. So so DEP is fully aware, there were studies done from 2014 through 2018. So an Act Two approval is in place that would allow us to do this development. Yes, it's been studied and there's an Act Two approval in place by DEP. There's a, what's called an environmental covenant on the property that that allows the property to be developed if there's a few items that have to be followed, and that would be done with our development.
There's a couple more questions?
Comments for the sake of time? I'm State Senator Katie Muth. I'm just gonna hold it because I'm short. I will be quick, just sitting here listening to this meeting and thank you for inviting me tonight. I just have some questions about the development. It looks very similar to developments that are happening all across my three counties, so I'm familiar with the the type, certainly not, I don't know your company well, so it's not a knock on you. These flat roofs, none of them have solar on them anywhere. So is there a conversation that I hope you're willing to have with the township about solar? Because that would certainly offset utility bills for people living there. It's amazing to me that all new development in Chester County still is being developed with gas utilities, so you didn't mention that in the development plan, so I'm not sure if gas utilities are part of this plan. But if they are, I would highly recommend you change that immediately as we're trying to fight a climate crisis, and it's incredibly difficult for fire and first responders to deal with that type of structure in in the event of a fire, despite having sprinkler requirements and all of those things. It's a major nuisance. And then also, I would just ask that you consider participating in some level, whether it's, I don't think you were in the room earlier when the county talked about their attainable housing initiative, but some level of reduced rent so that this is, has the opportunity to truly be affordable and accommodate more than one sector of demographic that is able to financially afford living here. I get that you have to make money off of a development, but there's no guarantee that that rents don't go up substantially beyond 7%, 3%. Many of the rents in this area in the last three years have gone through the roof, including even to buy a house. So I just say all that in that you obviously do these developments across the country, so you're good at what you do, but clearly you heard tonight that the community's looking for a partner, so it might be a good opportunity to set that example that you're willing to do that, and you'd probably be surprised how many more communities let you build in them, because you could use that as an example of of being a good neighbor and and trying to actually do real good for the community, not just for a bottom line. So thank you for giving me a few minutes.
Hi, my name's Steve Lawrence. I live at 25 Church Road. Thank you all for what you do. And I have a question for the gentleman after I say what I'm gonna say, and I'll try to be quick, and it's an overall general thing about these kind of places. I was the mailman and king of pressure for the town center when it first started to be built, delivered every one of those buildings. And typically what I found happened, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen here, and I would like to hear their answer at the end. What happened in these buildings is, great pictures, everything was clean, shuffleboard, the pool, and then over time, and and I think it happened to every single one of them, the first one was Indigo, the second one was Omni, right across the street, they got sold. And what happened is when they got sold, the level of service went down, and we called, my buddies at the mail, at the post office called it the maintenance man syndrome. First, they had spiffy uniforms, they were, then it was just a shirt and khakis, and then it was a shirt, t-shirt and jean jean shirt. So my concern is with the level of service going down, is the level of clientele gonna go down at places like this? And my question to you guys is, what is your history as far as reselling the properties once you? Thank you.
To specifically answer the reselling of of the properties, our our goal typically is to develop, lease up, and then take our, we have a financial partner that is an institutional pension advisor, typically a teacher's investment fund or a large Fortune 500 company's pension fund. They like to get out right away. We like to buy them out and then hold long term. The the yards specifically here, we we purchased, I'm not gonna turn around and look at you because they won't hear me, all right? The mic. The yards, we we took down the Mobile Home Park, we purchased the Mobile Home Park and Bowling Alley, I think, in the, I think it was the summer of 19, and we opened the facility, the building in 2021, and and we still own to date. I don't, I don't know when we'll sell. It just depends, but that's our goal, is to take our financial partner out and hold and manage long term for our portfolio. We don't own forever.
Yeah, I don't, if there's anything else, but as far as the request to appear to fast-track this to be part of the other application, I think it's way too early. This is literally the first time I'm seeing this, having read the ordinance, having, you know, a lot of questions. Fiscal study, if something like this doesn't happen quickly. The yards took, I think the yards took at least two, maybe three years just to get to the zoning, by a standpoint, I remember, I attended a few meetings, so it's just a lot for me to look at.
And my my comment is that, at this time, I'd like to see something other than an apartment complex at that location. I'd like to see a pocket park. I'd like to see an outdoor-type entertainment venue. This is not a disaster-type site. It's open ground, it's got a lot of potential, but I just don't see an apartment complex in this particular location that I can support. Okay, thank you. So John, we'll regress back down to your codes and
Mr. Chairman, another thing I would bring up is the Township has received several contacts from residents that were experiencing sporadic trash and recycling pickup delays by A.J. Blazinski. In looking into the matters, we've discovered, of course, that they were taken over by a nationwide company that does this to small haulers, Waste Connections. We're in the process of trying to contact people from both Blazinski's office, because it's actually apparently still open, and also Waste Connections, and it's been a a loop the last, as we've tried to reach them. With bantering machines, fax machine, I actually sent them a fax, since I had a fax number, to see if I get a response.
That's why I stuck you on them, John, because I got tired of holding on to the phone this morning. I never thought of using a fax machine. What the, what the heck is that? Okay, good, yeah. Let me ask you something. Does a trash hauler have to have a specific type of license to do business here in East Whiteland Township? And and if so, and if so?
We we have a, we have an ordinance that that puts down regulations, but we don't have a license for them to, for us to issue for them to operate here. It's more on the homeowner to hire a contractor to offer them the service, and then, you know, more a civil matter. But we do have ordinances that says what they should and shouldn't be doing, see what kind of teeth they have as we approach them.
Great, thanks, John. If you hear something, if you wouldn't mind, let me know, because I'm always talking to people and they're always asking me and and off to public comment. Mr. Caban, I think is coming down the aisle.
Hi, I'm Tim Caban, 1050 West King Road. I wanted to ask about 164 Conestoga because I find these proceedings to be extraordinarily confusing. We had, in February, you had a meeting and you said you had to advertise a hearing that was gonna take something from open space back to professional office. Then you've had votes at this meeting to continue the hearing under the same title of open space back to professional zoning. At the last May meeting, your your agenda says the same thing, which is to consider professional, open space back to professional, office, open space back to, or, you know, open space back to professional office. And in the middle of that meeting, we had an interchange with Zach and he said, I made a mistake. It actually used to be residential space, residential zoning. So I have a couple of questions. And then I just heard Mr. Lutz ask why this is not even on the agenda at all. And then I heard the explanation that it's just legislative so we could just do whatever we want. So why do you have to, why is it necessary to advertise something? Why is it necessary to vote on things, to continue things? And then to, have you terminated this now and just by, because you said so? Or what's going on with it?
Yeah, it's just like any other bill, like if you watch the state legislature or Congress, dies on the vine. And so if it dies on the vine and they don't want to do anything, we're not going to spend the money to advertise it again. So it's died on the vine. And if they want to consider it again, they would make another motion by law, by the MPC, if they make a motion to authorize advertising of a zoning ordinance amendment, you have to advertise it. So then, yes, we incur the expenses to advertise it again. But it's because it's legislative, there are certain aspects of what this board does that's quasi-judicial where they have to have a hearing. When it's legislative, they do not have to have a hearing just like any other bill. It just dies on the vine.
Okay. But if you have the hearing, you have a court reporter here, right?
If you have any type of quasi-judicial or...
Right. And if you have the hearing, you step into the role of the judge, don't you?
No, I'm not. I'm only a solicitor.
So your, your duty through any hearing where you're administrating is to who? Is it, who is your client in the middle of that hearing?
The board.
It's always, it's always to the board. Okay. So then the, the reason I'm asking this, and I'm asking this because this is the hidden zoning. We can all see zoning is where the money is. And the good thing about the big projects is that they make big presentations and people can see it and they can comment. When zoning changes are made. And so here's the question, because you denied a right-to-know request under Section 708 of the exception part of the right-to-know code, right? Because of environmental reviews, audits, or evaluations? Is that right? It is. It is. But...
I don't believe I...
Okay.
Can I just finish?
Yeah.
I don't believe I had any from you. I thought it was from Mr. Lutz. I had a right-to-know request.
Okay. I didn't say it was from me. I said you denied one, right? You, did you deny his, he just mentioned it earlier at this meeting.
Yeah, because I'm not permitted to provide that.
Okay. And then in that code, it says the exception is relative to the following: the leasing, acquiring, or disposing of real property.
Right. We haven't acquired it.
Okay. But if you don't cancel it, have you, are you now still in the, in the process of leasing? Or has that terminated? Are you in the process of acquiring? Or has that terminated? And does that affect the ability to get an environmental study under right-to-know?
Yeah. Unless we acquire the property, we're not permitted to give that out.
Forevermore?
Forevermore.
Okay.
Without the landowner's consent, as earlier said, right?
Right.
Even though you're not leasing, acquiring, or disposing, just if you ever talked to somebody about it at any point in history, forevermore, you cannot release that document under the law?
Under the law, we're not permitted to give it out.
Even if we ask for it 10 years from now, 20 years from now, you can't?
If we acquired the property, we could, but not if we haven't.
But if it's in limbo, you can't?
No, we can't.
Okay. So then the only other thing I want to mention is that it is, in my view, wildly inappropriate to consider a purchase of, of a property from a person together with a zoning change as part of the deal. Because unlike this big presentation where people can see the effects of zoning and they can ask questions, it makes it very hard to understand and my concern that I raised the last time, which is that by changing the zoning as part of the deal, you're changing the value of the deal and you're awarding what I call an economic benefit, money as a right result of the difference in zoning. So to me, the most, the highest integrity way to approach that transaction is to separate the task of changing zoning and negotiating the deal so that you can see the pieces and people can comment on those. Real quick, there are zoning debacles that have happened over and over, and I'll just give a quick, quick summary. Number one, 99 Church Road, Argus Property Group buys the property from a longtime landowner, but they flip it to Toll Brothers with enough fat in the deal for Toll Brothers to make conservatively hundreds of thousands of dollars of profit on the back of a historic impact, historic property bonus on the property. Three months after that deal was closed, that code was removed from our code. Number two, the billboard debacle. That code was changed by your predecessor, Mr. McGory, may he rest in peace, in a sleepy supervisor's meeting that I watched in YouTube where it said, oh, well, you know, this is, we're just changing this and it's going to defend us against this. It, oh, it changed the zoning sites on Route 30 from one to three. Then the billboard man came in with the most obnoxious lawyer in the tri-state area and browbeat our township into, into handing over land that had been granted by a longtime resident for open space. Then Mr. McGory, who's a smart lawyer, turned that into two parcels to defend against spot zoning, as he said on his Zoom call. And then after that whole process was done and, and they switched the billboard over to that and said, okay, we were blackmailed out of billboards on Route 30, that section of the code went back to the way it was before the whole thing. And then the last thing I want to mention, because it's the absolute best, was a number of years ago, a fine gentleman from the Bryn Mawr Apartments had his car towed during a snowstorm. And he represented himself pro se in court and beat the solicitor at that time in court because the law was overly broad and it was found that way by the judge. So this is a pattern that you can see if you just pay attention, over and over and over again. And the explanation is always mistakes. And the reason I'm bringing this up now is to say, please, we had something go, start in a process under conditions that said one thing, open space back to professional office. In the middle of that, it changes. Okay, we made a mistake. And then it vaporizes out of the agenda. If no one asked tonight, how would we ever know? So I'd ask, just please consider two things. Please pay attention to sleepy zoning changes. Pay attention to omnibus zoning and things that aren't clear because that's where the money is. And second of all, please, let's have a standard for vetting because it happens over and over again and no one catches it. And then we fix it, but by the time we fix it, the horse is out of the barn. So those are my comments. Thank you.
I have no interest whatsoever in changing the zoning for that property. As far as I'm concerned, it is over, done, and dead. It would have been part of an acquisition because it's next to the trail. I see no reason why we should acquire that property.
Thank you for your very direct comments, Rich. I appreciate it.
One comment?
Yeah, we have one more comment. Go ahead, Barb.
Hello, once again, Barbara Arnold, 31 Fondstock Road. Two things quickly. First of all, I want to thank you for inviting Senator Muth and Nikki Whitlock to tonight's meeting. I recently met them in another meeting. They were extremely helpful and I appreciate their being there and I appreciate you asking them to come. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is I got an email on Tuesday from DEP and it mentioned, it says, DEP intends to host a public meeting about the implementation of the remainder of the response action. This is regarding Bishop Tube. And to accommodate summer schedules, they're currently targeting September. So I just wanted to make you aware of that because I believe earlier this year, you were talking about trying to work with DEP to schedule some kind of a meeting with, you know, township residents or trying to facilitate that. So I wanted you to know that they are trying to facilitate a meeting in September. So if you also plan to do that, if you can please wait until after their meeting because that is when they will give us updates on their remediation plan. So to have a meeting before their meeting would serve no purpose because we would not have new information. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and ask if you can, you know, you know, you know our gang, we'll be happy to keep you informed on what's going on with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. I think Steve Brand has got kind of an update, some information he'd like to pass along to you on that subject.
Yeah. I spoke with Dustin Armstrong from the DEP, I believe it was two days after our, excuse me, our May meeting. And in that meeting, he explained that he'd had a meeting with the Delaware Riverkeeper and I believe some residents, you know, nearby neighbors of the Bishop Tube property. And he explained to me what you had just said. And I explained to Dustin that while we had been talking about a public meeting, that we had not even gotten to the point of selecting a date. We hadn't even gotten to the point of talking internally about what would be presented at the meeting or how it would be structured or anything of that nature. And Dustin asked, just what you did, that if they, and he said they were considering the request to push it, to have their meeting in the fall, if they chose to have their meeting in the fall, he asked that we coordinate with him and potentially follow the DEP meeting. And I agreed with him and, and said we'd do that. It's interesting that we received a letter today from the Delaware Riverkeeper Network stating the exact opposite. In fact, going so far as to say that we had a meeting scheduled and they wanted us to postpone the meeting and that we had not been communicating with the DEP. And I just wanted to say that that's, that's not accurate. In fact, it's 180-degree polar opposite of what's been going on. We have been communicating with the DEP and we're more than willing to coordinate with them so our meetings make sense and the residents get the maximum ability to comment, both to the state agency and to the township.
That's great. I really appreciate you sharing that information. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Barb. Any other questions? If not, I'll move into the consent agenda. And as par for the course, I will read them. Any specific questions? Please stop me. Approve the meeting minutes from May of 2023. Ratify the payment of bills in the amount of $1,135,221.10. Accept the treasurer's report for April. Ratify a proposal from Security Five for a front desk intercom in the amount of $1,283.08. Approve a proposal from Harrisburg Furniture for office furniture in the amount of $3,851. Ratify the Menardon additional services for a new police municipal building drawing in the amount of $9,600. Annual contribution to People's Light and GBCO in the amount of $1,500 each. Approve the Pima DAP 01 resolution for the reimbursement of COVID-19 emergency measure costs and the DR 4618 hurricane IDA reimbursement from Hurricane Ida. Any questions?
None.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by Scott.
On second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business on the agenda? John?